Be kind enough to take your seats. I'm going to call the first item for the city council meeting. The March 4th, 2009 meeting of the city council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being presented live on KCLV cable channel two and are closed captioned for our hearing impaired viewers. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the city's website at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV channel two and the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM and also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 1:00 PM. I make this announcement at every meeting out of an abundance of caution. There's no reason to suspect that this would ever take place, but this chambers is protected by a state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system. So if alarms should activate during today's meeting, please exit. And once you're outside, look for our marshals. They'll tell you when it's safe to come back in. As I say, we just do this out of an abundance of caution, and since we have a large crowd here, it probably makes even more sense today to do it. Before we begin with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Reverend Bonnie Polly, Christ Episcopal Church, and please remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we just give you thanks and praise for all of the exciting things that are happening in our city. We also thank you this morning for our women in remembrance of History Month. And we just ask you, Lord, to just continue to give this city council the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people, strengthen their efforts to blot out ignorance and prejudice, and to abolish poverty, and hasten the day when all people are united in dignity and in peace. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yes. Okay, fine. Just take care of yourself. Now, if you want me to do the items, I'll do the items. Thank you very much. Thank you, folks. Thank you. This is the ceremonial portion of our agenda, and for our first item, our mayor pro temp, Gary Wees, is going to recognize the Ward Three Citizen of the Month. Gary.
Thank you, Your Honor. He's really going to get honored today with all these people here. This morning, it's a pleasure to be able to have the Citizen of the Month come out of Ward Three. But to preface everything by saying that the items that he's done that we're going to talk about today, not only is in Ward Three in the City of Las Vegas, it's also the county. This man is a tremendous man. Today, we're going to honor Steven Segal. Steve, would you please come forward? Steve is the chief executive officer of the Segal Group Nevada Inc., oversees the daily operations of his many affiliate companies, and is responsible for identifying real estate and business development opportunities for his firm. A consummate entrepreneur and self-made businessman, Mr. Segal began his business endeavors at the young age of 16, with only a few dollars in his pocket and a passion to succeed. Years later, guided by his vision, passion, and determination, he has established and expanded many highly successful businesses and created hundreds of new jobs for Las Vegas residents. Mr. Segal entered the Las Vegas market in August 2004 with the acquisition of 132-unit Vista Arms Apartments located on the corner of Sierra Vista and Swenson, considered at the time to have been one of the roughest areas in Las Vegas. While most other real estate developers at the time were focusing on profit-driven condo conversions, Steve was doing the opposite and focusing on creating and maintaining safe and affordable housing options for Las Vegas residents. Steve immediately began a major renovation of the property, which included much-needed repairs and improvements, and worked closely with the residents and the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department to improve the area. Since 2004, Steve has acquired over 23 properties throughout Nevada, investing millions of dollars in renovations to many of his properties, which include the former St. Louis Manor Apartments, currently known as Segal Suites Apartments, Ward Three; the former Chancellor Apartments located on St. Louis and Paradise, currently known as Segal Suites St. Louis, which Steve acquired in May of 2006; the Bonanza Springs Apartments located on the corner of Bonanza Las Vegas Boulevard, which is in Ward Five; and the Gold Spike Hotel and Casino, which Steve acquired in January 2008, and it currently is undergoing a $5 million renovation, which has received rare reviews from a variety of publications, including Las Vegas Review Journal, Las Vegas Business Press, and Gaming Today. This project is also in Ward Five; and the former Casa Palms Apartments located on Las Vegas Boulevard North. Additionally, Steve recently acquired the former Barcelona Hotel and Casino, which has been renamed Single Slots and Suites, which is in the initial stages of planned renovation. Steve is a member of the International Conference of Shopping Centers, the Apartments Owners Association, the Nevada, Southern Nevada Multi-Housing Association, and the Nevada Hotel and Lodging Association. He and his company have been recognized by Inc. Magazine as among the Inc. 500 fastest-growing private companies for 2007 and 2008. In 2000, Steve made his love of Las Vegas official, becoming a Las Vegas resident, proving he is a Vagan for the long term. And with that said, Steve, it is really a pleasure to be able to pronounce you and have you as our Citizen of the Month for the City of Las Vegas. We do have a bigger sign over there. It's going to be hung out here for the next month, claiming you as our Citizen of the Month for the City of Las Vegas.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp, Mayor, members of the council. Just want to say that with all the help that you guys give us every day, you know, we're not able to do this without you and the city and all of my associates that work with me, Judy, Mike, Louise, Suzie, helping us out. This is the best city in the world to do this, and every time I go back to LA, people laugh at what's going on with Vegas, and I tell them Vegas is the best place, no matter what happens, Vegas will always be Vegas, and I'm always promoting Vegas, and this is the place to live and work. Thank you, everybody. I just want to also say that the Gold Spike first renovation is done now. Our restaurant's open, our bar's open, table games have come back. Everything's ready to go, and we're going to start the exterior soon.
Very good. Excellent, that's great. For our next item, we're going to recognize a special team of employees. The Team Quarterly Recognition Program is an effort within the city honoring a group of city employees that exemplifies the city's vision, mission, values, and priorities through exceptional teamwork and outstanding performance. To help in making this presentation, I'd like to ask Patricia Harris with our Cultural Affairs Division to join us. There she comes. And I'm pleased to announce that Brian Kendall and Richard Hooker have been named as the Team of the Quarter. Will they join us up here as well? Mr. Kendall and Mr. Hooker, good. Brian and Richard both work in the Cultural Affairs Division of the Office of Administrative Services. The two work on cultural events and one specific event, which has become very successful, the Vegas Valley Book Festival, just finished its seventh year, but expanded twofold this pastime through the efforts of Richard and Brian. They have also worked to combine the festival with the Target Children's Book Festival, which was very well-attended this year. Through their skills and community partners, more than $95,000 was provided in additional support to the festival. More than 100 authors participated in all the events that drew thousands of attendees to both the book festival and the children's festival. Events such as this are key to the redevelopment of downtown and help us remain the world-class city we have become. So on behalf of the entire city council, gentlemen, I'd like to congratulate you both on being named the Team of the Quarter. You already have your plaques, and you're getting, you got a lot of gifts yesterday, didn't you? Huh? Did you get any money? Did you get any free martini tickets for, what's the name of your bar over there? At the Gold Spike? Huh? All right, we should be winding up about 4:30 today, so. There we go. Patricia?
Thank you. It was my great pleasure to nominate these two gentlemen. They exemplify everything a City of Las Vegas employee should be and a great programmer is, and it's very appropriate that they should win this quarter because this week is National Reading Week, and the book festival is all about literature. So I'm not going to take any more time, I'm going to let them say a few words, but it was just my greatest pleasure to do this.
Thank you very much. Richard?
Thank you. Thank you, Patricia. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I really want to thank you for honoring Brian and I today for our teamwork that we've done for this book festival, the Target Children's Festival, and the Vegas Valley Book Festival. You know, it's really very special to be honored by the city as a, working as a good employee. We know there are lots of talented and creative employees out there who are also very deserving. In thanking you all, I want to thank our executive director, Ted Olivas, and I want to thank our manager, Nancy Deener. It's Nancy's love of literature that really got this festival going. And of course, I want to thank Patricia for forging these strategic partnerships that have been so important. And, Mr. Mayor, because you always talk about how the arts are necessary for building a great city, I want to say that when you honor us today for literature, you're really honoring the arts, and when you bring the arts to the civic table, that is really a great thing. So thank you.
Thank you.
I too would like to echo what Richard said in thanking the city council and mayor and our city management team, especially the Office of Cultural Affairs Management, Nancy Deener and Patricia Harris, for believing in us as a team and pulling us all together. It takes a team to reach out to the community, and I want to thank some of our community partners, especially Target, who has helped us make the Children's Book Festival possible. I also want to thank who's in the audience today, my friends from the library district, Tina and Mary Brown, and also Laurie Hardig, who will be recognized later from Kids to Kids Spread the Word. They have been with the Children's Book Festival since the beginning, and it has been the efforts of many of the community organizations to make this festival happen. I am grateful for the opportunity that city management has given myself and Richard this chance to exercise our skill set and to be able to play a small role in such an important and vital community event that reaches out to the people of this great community. I'm grateful for this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Great speech, gentlemen. Congratulations. Great speech. Thank you. Thank you, Patricia. Very nice. It's wonderful. Thank you. For our next item, we're going to honor a member of the Las Vegas Fire and Rescue Department. And to help us in making this presentation, I'd like to ask Marcy Graffa with Liberty Mutual Insurance and our fire chief, Greg Gammon, to join us up here. And I'm going to turn the microphone over to Marcy to present the Liberty Mutual Fire Mark Award. Marcy.
Hi, I'm Marcy Graffa. I'm with Liberty Mutual Insurance. The reason why I'm here today is to talk about the Fire Mark Award. The Fire Mark Award is an award awarded to a firefighter annually for community service and heroism. Last year, we awarded this award to various firefighters here in Las Vegas. After we awarded this award, it went to a national committee, and in that national committee, they selected a national winner. The national winner receives a $10,000 check from Liberty Mutual and an all-expense-paid vacation to Orlando, Florida. It's my, it's my, boy, I'm getting nervous up here. It's my distinct privilege to announce the winner of this award, and that goes to firefighter Tim Zemansky. Tim?
We're very proud and honored of Tim to be the recipient of this award. People often think that the most important thing that firefighters do, or the fire service does, is respond to 911 calls, and though that's the critical aspect of our mission, the most important thing that we do in the fire service is how well do we educate the public? How well do we teach kids, parents, business owners? How well do, how good of a job do we do teaching them to be safe? Teaching them how to recognize dangers in their home or in their business? And that's what the fire service's number-one goal is, and it's not often known, because when people associate the fire department, they think of fire trucks and engines and rescues and the bells and all the whistles, and that's all important, especially if you need it. But what's important to us is our education efforts. And there is nobody that's more deserving of this award than Tim. He is a tireless worker. He is very deserving of this award. And as your fire chief for the City of Las Vegas and on behalf of the Las Vegas Fire and Rescue, we want to thank Tim for the work that he has done for us. I'd also like to thank Marcy Graffa and Phil Ferguson here from Liberty Mutual for them recognizing that Tim was deserving, there they are, that Tim's deserving of this award, and we agree completely that there's nobody that's more tireless and deserving right now than Tim Zemansky.
I want to thank Liberty Mutual for this award. The Fire Mark is one of the most prestigious awards in the fire service. The Fire Mark was something used 200 years ago to identify buildings to be protected by the fire department, and to have that historic emblem is really an honor. I want to thank Liberty Mutual for giving money to the community. We're going to use this wisely to educate our community. To the mayor and council, they've always been supportive of all my programs. I worked with all of you. Chief Gammon and his staff are giving me the latitude to do these programs out there in the community. The firefighters from Las Vegas Fire and Rescue, especially 1285, they've backed me up on a lot of my programs. Four individuals I want to mention that are real special to me, Joe O'Rourke, Brian Willett, and Roy Lawson, they've helped me through all my programs, especially the Citizens' Fire Academy, which we're in our 10th year, and it's been nationally recognized to educate the community. And lastly, my wife, Ellen, and my family, my two boys. I couldn't do this if I didn't give up a lot of time, sacrifice time at home. She's been my rock for the last 40 years, and she's held down the fort while I'm out teaching these classes and that, and I just want to recognize for what she's put up for. No, she's helping teach school. Thank you, Mayor.
It's okay. I hope your wife spends the money well.
I just want to mention that this goes to the department, not to me, okay? I don't want people, and when they says the all-expense-paid vacation to Orlando, Liberty Mutual has the largest fire safety exhibit in the United States in Orlando, and that's why I'm going. They're asking me to go and be a part of it, and I am honored to say that I've been to Liberty Mutual's Be Fire Smart exhibit. If you're ever in Orlando, go to Epcot, and that's where the exhibit is, and it's supposed to be the best in the world when it comes to fire safety education.
For our next items, Councilwoman Tarkanian will recognize March as Women's History Month and a local woman who makes sure that local schools have books.
Traditionally, the City of Las Vegas celebrates Women's History Month each year, and for the past couple of years, it's been my honor to be able to present the awards. Each year, a national theme is picked for Women's History Month, and this year, the theme is sustainability. Now, we hear sustainability mentioned all over the place, and basically, the definition of that is the ability to maintain a certain process or state, and that's sort of nebulous in a way. So currently, sustainability means many different things to many different people. Therefore, I tried to choose women who both represent different branches of the sustainability tree and who have also made large strides in the community. The concept of sustainable living, much like the concept of going green, has become very popular lately. So when I was narrowing down my choices, I also tried to pick women who have been promoting sustainability for more than just a few years. And now today, I would like you to help me in honoring the 2009 Women's History Month Award for Sustainability. And as I call each of these ladies up to the front here, I'd like them to say a few words about themselves. First of all, I'd like to ask Jan McAdams to come up, please. Jan is a native Nevadan and a nationally-recognized fundraiser and education consultant for green buildings and renewable energies. She also is the publisher editor of the Funding Green Buildings Toolkit, which is considered in the field the most comprehensive resource of this type for green buildings. And she currently is the coordinator for New Horizon Academy's Green Campus Project in Las Vegas that will seek LEED Platinum certification, the very first academic institution that will be doing that. Jan?
In Nevada.
In Nevada, yes.
Thank you very much. I didn't know if I was allowed to give gifts, but I brought you the Celebrate Green Buildings bear for you to put on your desk and remember every day how hard us little bearers are doing. It's just a delight to accept an award based on, this week actually is 13 years now involved with green buildings. And I started 13 years ago at the request of the State Energy Office, who convinced me that I should drive this effort forward in Nevada, and I was so tickled at them picking me, and about a year later, when I was thanking them, they said, frankly, you were the only one that would do it, Jan. So I've been pleased to be part of an effort where 12, 13 years ago, when we would meet with someone about high-performance buildings, they would literally throw us out of their office. So we've loved to see the green building movement escalate in all the wonderful ways that it has. I have a little gift for everybody, too. I'm very committed to green buildings, so I brought each of you your little starter Green Building Library and the Green Building book. Also, I brought a little article that Las Vegas is number 10 out of all the big cities in America in terms of our square footage of green buildings. So, yeah. So will you make sure? Will you make sure everybody gets one? I want to tell you that I noticed that was titled "Green Building for Dummies," and I just wondered, no, I know you didn't, but there are some people who might go along with that, but we don't think so. We don't think so. And I'm very pleased that Lois has accepted the New Horizons Academy's invitation to cut the green ribbon on St. Patrick's Day of the Greenest Classroom in Nevada Demonstration Project. So it's at 10:00 AM. We want all of you to come over, and thank you very much for helping us. I appreciate it.
Please stay here while I cut the other stuff, okay? And next, I'd like to call forward for honor Deborah Williams. Deb is the manager of the Office of Chronic Disease Prevention and Health Promotion at the Southern Nevada Health District, a position that she has held since August 2005. The United States spends more than any other nation on health care costs, but ranks no better than 26th for health outcomes. Today's children may live shorter lives than their parents and would be the first generation to do so. This has led Deb to promote the importance of including health in all sustainability discussions, and there are actions we can take to build healthier communities that will help people. Here, Deb.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Thank you. As Councilwoman said, I have been working for a number of years to promote healthy lifestyles, and as we work on this, we've recognized how important it is to build healthy communities. And I want to commend the City of Las Vegas. Oscar Goodman, Mayor Oscar Goodman, has created the Green Council and has invited health to be at the table, and so thank you. Also, the City of Las Vegas Planning Department has been working with me as they're reviewing their codes to look at how we can incorporate concepts to promote healthy lifestyles in the way we build our community. So thank you.
And next, I'd like to, did you want to take a picture just quickly? Okay, quickly. Any other pictures, we'll have to wait till the end. Catherine Fergus is the next one we are going to honor. She's the Southern Nevada Recycling Coordinator for the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection. She served on the Southern Nevada Recycling Advisory Committee. The committee's efforts resulted in the Clark County Commissioner's approval of the proposed project, Green Works, a comprehensive plan of recycling initiatives designed to increase recycling in Southern Nevada, and you know how hard we've been working within the city also on recycling.
Thank you all for this honor. I am very appreciative and very shocked. In our, in our environmental world, you don't always get recognition for the hard work that you've been doing, and I've been doing this for well over 20 years. It may not look like I've been doing that for that long, but I definitely have. I've never given up on what I think is, is right, and I think being good stewards of our earth and, and our natural resources is a primary focus that all of us should incorporate into our daily lives. And just so everyone has a little glimmer of hope here, we went up four percentage points in Clark County from 15% to 19% in our recycling rate, and we are slowly inching towards our 25% goal, but we do have good news. And if anyone knows any teachers, we also have a recycling curriculum that we offer, and our first workshop is this weekend, and it is full. So I look forward to the recycling rate increasing every, every inch of the way here.
Thank you very much, Catherine. And then we would like to have Deborah March come up, please. Deborah has served as Executive Director of the LEED Institute for Real Estate Studies at UNLV since 1996. Through her leadership, the institute participates in extensive research and analysis in areas that include sustainability, economic diversification, workforce housing, the social impacts of growth, and retail projections, infill development, conservation development, and other related subjects, all of which intertwine with what we're trying to do as far as staying green, going green, sustainability, whatever you want to call it. It's a multifaceted project.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Really appreciate this acknowledgement. Mayor, council members, thank you so much for acknowledging too many years, and I care to cite today, that I've been working in the area of sustainability. But I do want to acknowledge the City of Las Vegas for their great strides and their leadership in the area of sustainability. They've really made a difference here in Southern Nevada, and the decisions that they make really influence the outcome of good growth and creating communities of lasting value in Southern Nevada. And I encourage your continued participation with your community cities to create a Southern Nevada that will be sustainable for years to come. And I'd like to acknowledge my friends and family that are here in the audience, and thank you very much. Appreciate this honor.
And each, each one of these ladies has a proclamation from the mayor, for the members of the city council, for their contribution- of the city council, for their contribution, and you know what? Las Vegas women do a lot. They really, truly do. Let's give another round of applause for these ladies. We all know that March is Reading Month, and we've been doing a lot of collection of books here within the city, and I want to just thank everybody now for all the great help that they've given us. Today, we want to honor a group that has especially helped us as far as helping collect the books and getting them distributed to children. So could I please have Lori Harzig come up? Because Lori is going to represent Spread the Word Nevada, a group we're honoring today. I just wanted to... Hi, Lori. I wanted to say that Spread the Word Nevada, Kids to Kids, nonprofit organization, contributes to children in our community by promoting literacy and providing access and ownership of books to children. And it provides a partnership also with area senior citizens and developmentally-challenged young adults who help take these used books, clean them, and ensure the books are ready for distribution. Kids to Kids regularly distributes books to children through at-risk schools it adopts throughout the Las Vegas Valley. And I want to say they keep a low profile. I've been very active in the schools, and I wasn't aware of how much they've done in promoting literacy and sharing books with children. They've done a tremendous job. And Spread the Word, the group that Lori has promoted and initiated, they have received numerous awards, including the Nevada Community Foundation's 2005 Winner of Outstanding Charity of the Year, and the Governor's Points of Light Award for the Nonprofit of the Year in 2006. With the support of the community, Kids to Kids, the group you started, has contributed over one... Excuse me, I'm having a little trouble here today. Over 1 million books to the children here in Las Vegas, and that's a tremendous aspect. So today, we, the mayor and the members of our council, are proclaiming March 4, 2009, as Spread the Word Nevada Kids to Kids Day. And it's appropriate that we give a certificate in that honor. It's appropriate that we give a certificate to Lori because she represents the group. Obviously, you can't give it to every member of the group, but because you represent the group, we wanted to have you have that honor. Lori is a retired elementary school librarian. She graduated from Southern Methodist University with a BA in Education and a master's degree from UNLV in Curriculum and Instruction, specializing in library science. During her 16 years working with at-risk children, she realized the impact that ownership of books made in the lives of her young students. Although inspiring children to check out books from her library was her goal, when she found that she could provide youngsters with a book of their own from discarded library books, she saw the magic of book ownership. Her students sparkled, they stood taller and prouder. Now, I've been able to participate in activities like that. You can't believe how many children do not have a book of their own at home. And when you give them that first book, their eyes light up, and it's mine? I get to take it home? It's a marvelous thing, and it's a good feeling to have when you're doing that. Lori promotes the program through speaking engagements and other outreach activities, and she oversees all the different programs of Spread the Word Nevada. Thank you.
Thank you. I am so honored, and I'm going to do something because this honor truly is shared among some very special ladies. So I'm asking Lisa Habichhorst, our executive director, and Cindy Hensel, our book coordinator, and Angela Otto to please come up and join me. These ladies are the ones who make it happen. They're the ones who are working tirelessly and fiendishly in promoting literacy through all of Southern Nevada, especially in Las Vegas. And we're going to help create a literate Las Vegas. We have to extend special thanks to the city of Las Vegas because you have been there, lock, stock, and barrel every step of the way in your support and in your guidance and in all that you do for us. Thank you so very much for this honor. It just means the world to us all.
We truly are very proud to be part in honoring you, and I wanted you to know, you have your proclamation, the group has its also. So you have the entire group recognized, and then we recognized you as the founder. This week, for the past month, our city has collected books, and we have collected, I think approximately 1,000 books, which is quite a bit. And we, the mayor and I, initiated the first distribution of these books at Vegas Fergies Elementary School, and gave each child a book of their own, gave the library there an extra box of books for their shelves, and we will be doing it pretty soon at E.W. Griffith School, and probably at Doris Hancock also. And then the books that we have left over, we're going to give to this lady to distribute within the city to those schools who need help, and those schools that they've already adopted, because they have adopted some, I know in Councilwoman Reese's ward, and I know in Councilwoman Barlow's ward, and that's what we're going to do. We hope this will be a partnership we can have every year.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
There's somebody else that couldn't come up because he is one of our board members, Scott Robin, who is our resident photographer, but he's out there working tirelessly, too, so I had to share it with him.
Did you want to take a... Have a four-minute picture, or what? Okay, let's just take a quick one.
Oh, boy. Thank you. We're not used to this. Thank you so much, Councilwoman. This absolutely touches our hearts. Thank you.
For our final item, Councilman Ross is going to recognize a local student for earning
a prestigious national award. Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate that. As evidenced today, we certainly have an incredible amount of talented people who go the extra mile and give back to this community. I just want to know, Mayor, all the ladies that come up here, Mayor Protem's getting a hug, Councilman Diamond and I are just kind of left out in the cold. Just an observation, he is a handsome man, by the way. Yeah, you like his tie. It's great to recognize so many wonderful people, but when we have a member of this community who happens to be one of our youth, one of our students, it's important that we certainly go the extra mile and recognize them. It is an honor for me today... Before I introduce this young man, I want to introduce Captain Hardeman from Centennial High School. Captain, can you come up here with me, please, for a minute? Come up here with me first. Thank you, Captain. And I'm bringing him up here first, so he can stand here and watch this young man's face as he walks up here. Now, Mom and Dad, I want to invite you up as well before we invite your son up. Ray and Kim Ortega, come on up here. And I'm going to introduce this young man. Let me tell you about him first. I would like to introduce to you a remarkable young man. His name is Joshua Ortega. He is a junior at Centennial High School. Since the onset of his freshman year, he has had many achievements... Don't come up yet, buddy. You got to make an entrance. He has had many achievements, and he has earned many awards, as well as bettering himself and his school. He is in the top 4% of his class and has an overall 4.4 GPA. He's just on the edge of his seat. He is currently enrolled in the NJROTC as an NS3. He is the number-one cadet of all the cadets. And I have to share this story with you before I bring him up. Some family members up at Centennial called me a few weeks ago and said, "Councilman, there's going to be an admiral at Centennial. We'd like you to come up and meet him." I'm thinking, "Great, I've never met an admiral before. This'll be cool." When I get to Centennial High School, I get out on the football field, there are over 200 young men and women of our community, our students, on the field, in uniform, in assembly, and it just amazed me, and I thought, "Those are our children out there. Those are our children out there." Over the past... Joshua has been a member of the Student Council for three years and is a member of the National Honor Society. His efforts help Centennial High School Student Council be selected as the number-one student council in the state of Nevada. Okay, you're killing me. Come on up here. Come on up, everybody. Stand right here. Stand right here. I'm not done yet. Pretty cool, huh? Now you see why I made you wait, but it's so good, I got to have you up here so you can stand next to me, okay? Over the past three years, Cadet Ortega has immersed himself in the Centennial High School's NJROTC. He has moved in rank from being a follower as a seaman recruit to managing as a chief petty officer, to currently commanding as the officer's rank of Cadet Lieutenant Junior Grade. Is that correct? Commander, Commander Ortega. Over the past three years in the program, he's received awards from the American Legion, University of Nevada Las Vegas, and numerous other NJROTC awards for outstanding grades, excellence in military drill, aptitude, and etiquette to outstanding leadership abilities. Last month, and here's the cool part, Cadet Ortega received the prestigious Legion of Valor Bronze Cross for Achievement. This achievement was given by the Legion of Valor of the United States of America, and it was that admiral that got to give it to him. The Legion of Valor created a Bronze Cross for Achievement to those cadets of the Reserve Officers Training Corps who have demonstrated excellence in military, scholastic, and civic affairs. The Legion of Valor is one of the two most unusual organizations in the United States. Eligibility is limited to recipients who have received our nation's two highest decorations for valor, meaning that our nation's heroes determine who should be awarded this achievement. The NJROTC has over 65,000 cadets worldwide, and only 10 cadets are chosen for this award. Cadet Ortega is the type of person that we want leading our nation in the future and making the decisions that will determine the course of this great nation for years to come. He is the type of future leader that we need, and I am honored to introduce to you Commander Ortega. I've just elevated you. Commander Ortega. Give him another round of applause. This is for you. He didn't do this by himself, and you see standing next to him are his mom and dad. And that's where character counts. When a young man aspires to this level as a junior in high school, it's because of fabulous, fantastic parents who support this young man. Before I give the microphone to Cadet Ortega, I'd like Captain Hardeman to say a few words.
Thank you, sir. One of the things that we find that we do not create, all we do is help to build from the foundations our cadets have. But without the cadets, without the families, the people that make our program the best are the community, because you give us an opportunity for these young people to come out and do community service, to learn skills, to show their talents, and then the support like this is just incredible. We are... No other school gets this type of support. No other city supports its students like Las Vegas, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Captain. When this young man was out on that field screaming out commands and running that whole operation, it gave me goosebumps, and I thought, and I asked his parents first. We were sitting next to each other during the demonstration. I said, "Hey, can we bring him down to meet the mayor and the council and introduce him to the citizens of Las Vegas?" And here he stands today. It's all yours, my friend.
Thank you, City of Las Vegas, mayor and councilman. This... Although it's quite honorable to get this award, and I can't receive all the credit because, first of all, my family, how much support they give me is tremendous, and I cannot do all this without them. And most importantly, my family back at Centennial High School, the NJRC program, all that... Every single day, all the cadets that come in their uniform, and they come and they have a look that they want to do better, and it's a great honor to lead them and help them build their foundation for their graduation and citizenship afterwards, whether to go to college or military or whatnot. And so, the credit goes mostly to the NJRC program and all the support that the community gives to the program and the school. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Mr. Ortega, I think I'm going to offer you a job in a real city. We'll go to item number 11. Any items from the morning session that the council, staff, and/or the applicant wish to be stricken or held in advance to a future meeting may be brought forward and enacted upon at this time. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have item number 17 and 18 on the consent count for this morning. Item change of business name, change of ownership for a tavern license, restricted gaming license from Buffalo Investments, Inc., doing business at Roadrunner Saloon, Buffalo, to Golden RR Buffalo LLC, doing business at Roadrunner Saloon, 921 North Buffalo Drive. Staff wants that to be held in advance until our next meeting on March 18, 2009. And consent item number 18 is change of business name, change of ownership for a tavern license, restricted gaming license from True West Investments, Inc., doing business at Roadrunner Centennial, to Golden RR Centennial, LLC, doing business, Roadrunner Saloon, 5990, Centennial Center Boulevard. Staffs want that to be held in advance until our March 18, 2009 meeting. Items 42 and 43. Item 42 is R132009, approval of resolution determining the cost of directing the director of public works to prepare the final assessment role for special improvement, district number 1485 Altha Drive, 275 feet west of Lacy Lane, landscape maintenance. They'd like that to abate until our March 18, 2009 meeting. And item 43 is a R142009, approval of a resolution fixing the time and place when complaints, protests, and objections to the final assessment role will be heard for special improvement, district number 1485, Altha Drive, Rancho Drive, 275 feet west of Lacy Lane. They'd like that to be held in advance until our March 18, 2009 meeting. Items 46 through 49, appeals regarding notices and orders to abate dangerous buildings, demolition, Moulin Rouge Properties, LLC, located at 840 West Bonanza Road, 920 West Bonanza Road, 901. Bonanza Road, 901 West McWilliams Avenue, units 902, 903, 904, 906, and 907, and 1001 West McWilliams Avenue. The applicants ask those items to be stricken. Item 59 is a review of temporary approval of a supper club license, Calix Fine Dining LLC, doing business at Calix Jazz Club, 4760 West Sahara Avenue, Suite 13, Regina Edwards, managing member. Staff says that should be held in advance until our March 18, 2009 meeting. And item 61 is appeal of non-renewal of burglar alarm service license, Pinnacle Security LLC, at 1290 South Sand Hill Road. Staff asks that to be held in advance until our March 18, 2009 meeting. Are there any other items we need to report at this time? Hearing that, Your Honor, make a motion to bring these items forward and take the appropriate action, please.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Post.
Can I have your revote, please?
All right, certainly. Let's revote, please. Post, please.
There we go.
Motion carries. Thank you. Before...
Mayor.
Yes, I was gonna say, before Councilman Barlow goes forward, I don't know whether your vote registered on that.
Right. If my vote did register.
Ms. Bridges, I'm not sure that the Councilman Barlow's vote registered.
It didn't.
I think we should. All right, let's vote on item number 11 again.
Do we have to wait for it to say yea or nay for when the mayor says?
Yeah, now it comes up, now you can check.
What it says that the word...
Okay, that's better. Motion carries. Thank you. At this time, I believe Councilman Barlow has a guest.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to introduce my guest for the day, my job shadow, and actually, he can do a better job than I can of introducing himself. Thank you.
Good morning, City of Las Vegas. Thank you, City Council and the best mayor in America, Mayor Oscar Goodman. I am a junior at Las Vegas High School, and I am job shadowing Councilman Ricky Barlow. I want to go into the business of line... Oops, I mean, politics. And it's great to be here with you today.
See you today.
Patrick Dillon.
All right, welcome, Patrick. All right, item... Item number 12, approval of the final minutes by reference of the regular city council meeting of February 4, 2009. Mayor, put down.
Yes, Your Honor, in order to do the decisions, I'd like a motion for approval of the minutes, please.
All right, let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you. I am going to call some items out of order here. Folks have been sitting very patiently.
Let's do it like a sync hour.
I'm gonna call items 14, 55, 56, and 70. These items will be heard together. Item number 14 is an abeyance item, the approval of the certificates of results declaring the petition submitted for the Las Vegas Taxpayer Accountability Act initiative and the Las Vegas redevelopment reform referendum as sufficient pertaining to all awards. Number 55 is discussion and possible action regarding the call for an appointment of members for the ballot question committees for the Las Vegas Taxpayer Accountability Act initiative petition and the Las Vegas redevelopment reform referendum petition. Number 56 is discussion and possible action regarding consideration and ballot placement of initiative and referendum petitions for June 2, 2009 elections and other related matters. And number 70, Bill Number 2009-8, repeals ordinance number 5830 relating to the adoption of an amended and restated redevelopment plan proposed by Bradford R. Jerwic, City Attorney. Mr. Jerwic.
Thank you.
Before you start, Mr. Jerwic, we have a lot of folks out there in the audience, and I'm just interested, if you could give me by a show of hands, how many are unemployed? Unemployed? Not working? All right, it looks like the better part, I think when I spoke to Mr. White and Mr. Morley earlier today, they indicated about 90 to 95% of the folks out there do not have jobs right now, and Mr. White advised me that one of the major projects on the strip ceased construction today, and even more people will be laid off in the community. And it's with that background that I believe we're going to receive this report and recommendation from our city attorney, Mr. Jerwic, and we'll listen very carefully to the advice that you're gonna give us, Mr. Jerwic.
Thank you, Your Honor, and members of council. What I'd like to do first is read the new bill, read the bill of settlement for adoption to the record so that procedure...
I think you have to turn the mic on, please.
Does this sound better?
That's better.
Let me read Bill Number 2009-8 and ordinance repeal ordinance number 5830 relating to the adoption of an amended and restated redevelopment plan and prior to other related matters. Your Honor, there are four items that you have called this morning, and in the vernacular, one of them is to accept the certification of the petitions that were submitted for the referendum and the initiative as sufficient. For the record, those petitions are sufficient in a technical sense. The number of signatures that were required to be gathered by the committee appears to be sufficient, the people who make up the committee appears to be sufficient, but I have been asked by the city clerk to opine as to whether or not the petitions themselves are legally sufficient. That is whether or not the subject matter contained in the referendum and the initiative are proper subject matter for consideration on the ballot.
All right, I want everyone to be able to hear you, so if we could turn the volume up, or you go to a different mic, I would appreciate that.
Is this one better?
That's much better.
Thank you. I hope that's a little better. Thank you. The... I have written a memo, and I have presented it to the city clerk today, and I have made copies of it and presented it to the city council. The memo concludes that in my legal opinion, both the referendum and the initiative are not legally sufficient and are not proper subject matter for consideration on the ballot. I'd like to make a bit of a record this morning and then go through these four line items and make a recommendation to the council as to how I think this council should proceed. Let me first say that with respect to initiatives and referendums, voters across this country and in this city in the past and in other cities in Nevada have proposed to change the law, to make legislative changes which are permitted by initiative petition, and repeal ordinances or laws which are permitted by referendum petition. And from time to time, those laws that are proposed by citizens are not considered by voters in a vote on a ballot because they are illegal. This would be the equivalent of a council trying to sponsor a law. If you couldn't propose it before the city council, voters could not vote on it and adopt it either. An example that I've used during our briefings, it's a pretty harsh example, but I'll just use it to illustrate, is that what if one of you wanted to propose an ordinance making a particular religion the official religion of the city of Las Vegas? I don't think anybody would have a doubt that that's unconstitutional, illegal, and I would advise this council that you should not even consider it. And I have no doubt if it were adopted, it would be challenged and it would be defeated in court. That is the same for an initiative or a referendum. If voters proposed that same question, there's no way a city would put that question on a ballot. It wouldn't be voted on. There might be some legal challenges, but I'm pretty confident at the end of the day a court of law would say that is not proper subject matter for the ballot. In this particular case, there is a referendum and initiative petition that were filed on December 9, 2008. Again, as to the sufficiency of signatures and as to the formation of the petitioner's committee, the clerk has determined there are no issues. Based on advice from my office, I believe there are sufficient legal issues, and I wish for a moment to go through them. The referendum petition as proposed by the petitioner's committee proposes to repeal ordinance number 5830, which was an ordinance adopted by the city council that did two things. It restated the city of Las Vegas redevelopment plan, and it added additional property to the plan. It is our opinion that by repealing that particular ordinance, you end the life of the redevelopment agency. The reason we've come to that conclusion is because when you restated the plan in 19... or in 2006, you took every version of that plan and rolled it up into one new plan. And if you repeal that, nothing survives. Under Las Vegas Municipal Code 1.04.040, the code specifically addresses what happens when you repeal an ordinance. And it reads in relevant part, "The repeal of an ordinance shall not revive any ordinance enforced before or at the time the ordinance repealer took effect." What that means is, if you repeal the restatement in 2006, you don't go back to the ordinance that gave you a redevelopment agency with a little less property that was on the books before 2006. It goes away, period. That issue has been raised before. In 1995, a petitioner's committee was formed in the city of Las Vegas, properly formed, gathered the proper number of signatures, and for technical sufficiency, they met that test. For legal sufficiency, they did not. They sought in 1995 to repeal an ordinance that would essentially end the life of the agency. The memo I've distributed to you today contains some information. The agency currently has to repay $23.3 million in redevelopment bonds and $50.8 million in tax increment notes. To abolish the agency is to abolish the income stream, the tax increment, that pays over $80 million in obligations. The United States Constitution addresses this. It's addressed it from the day it was written and says that you shall not pass any law which interferes or impedes your existing contract rights. That's it in the vernacular. This has been looked at by courts across the country. It is my opinion, based on the research I've done and contained in our memo that has been distributed to the council and I will make part of the public record, that to repeal the agency as proposed by the referendum petition will absolutely impair, it'll end our ability to pay over $80 million in obligations and therefore is unconstitutional. I want to remark, without mentioning names, that when the petitioner's committee was appraised of the fact that this was the law, and there was a 1995 Attorney General opinion right on point that this city had asked for, they responded that they were unfamiliar with the Attorney General opinion and said, quote, "We have structured our referendum so it wouldn't interfere with any existing bond obligations." That is not true. This is structured to kill the redevelopment agency and to absolutely impair your bond obligations as a consequence. As a result, based on our research, the United States Constitution and case law that flows from it, we believe it to be unconstitutional and an improper subject matter for inclusion on the ballot. I want to make part of the record, Your Honor, the 1995 Attorney General opinion that I asked for, from then Attorney General Frankie Soudal-Papa, that addressed that exact issue, very similar referendum, very similar outcome, and the Attorney General's office concluded that the referendum simply may not be used to undo the redevelopment plan in this case because the city council's adoption of the plan was administrative and not legislative in nature. Additionally, any attempt to repeal the redevelopment plan on the ballot would violate Article 1, Section 10 of the United States Constitution. As the Nevada Attorney General in 1995, it's no less true today as it was then. I'd like to file that with the clerk.
All right, if you hand that to Ms. Bridges, thank you. Part of the record.
Your Honor, if I may approach, I also have options for the council.
Very good. Thank you. If you'd hand those up to us, please.
Before moving on to address the initiative petition, I would ask at this point in time if the council has any questions regarding our advice regarding the referendum petition.
Mayor Goodman?
Yes, Councilman Barlow?
Yes, I do have a question for Mr. Jerwic. Just so that I'm clear, are you stating that should we move forward with the ordinance today that's before us, should it move forward, we run the risk of dissolving the RDA and all of the contracts that are currently in place?
That is correct. Let me explain why this ordinance is on the agenda. It's not exactly the same we handled it in 1995, but it is... it's on there for a reason. When I read that bill into the record at the last council meeting and asked that it be fast-tracked, I also stated that just because my name is on it for sponsorship does not mean I am recommending this bill, and I stated then that I am not recommending that you adopt this bill. I will, at the appropriate time, give you my recommendation, and my recommendation is for denial, and I will ask you to take a vote to that effect this morning. The reason we put it on the agenda in this form, because I wasn't certain at the time what might happen with respect to potential negotiations to resolve the questions raised in the petition. I was not sure at the time whether the council wanted to simply vote no on an ordinance because under the law, you have from the time the signatures are counted, 30 days to consider whether or not you want to adopt the referendum. That's what the law says. So, one way to look at it is we put it on to give you a chance to say no, that you did consider it and you said no. Because we have an open meeting law, the only way to find that out is to tee it up in front of you and have you take that vote. So, that's why that bill is on. It's never been on because I recommend it. It's never been on because I believe it's legal. It's only on because the law says you have 30 days to consider it, and this is within the 30 days.
So, in essence, there were enough signatures in order for an initiative to go on the ballot. Is that correct?
Right. Separate from the bill, separate from the bill, there are two things out there. A referendum, referendums, repeal laws, take them off the books. That is out there. They gathered sufficient signatures. The petitioners live in the city. They meet the technical requirements. But the subject matter, which is the repealing of the ordinance that creates the redevelopment agency plan, is not proper subject matter for the ballot. So, with respect to that portion of my presentation, I have recommended that this council, and I'll ask you at the very end, direct the clerk to send a letter to the petitioner's committee indicating that the referendum will not be placed on the ballot for the reasons I have stated.
Mayor Goodman, not to be redundant, in simple terms, the petitioners followed the proper process in obtaining the ballots, the signatures, excuse me, and having the signatures certified. It's the substance of what they are asking for that, in your opinion, is either unconstitutional or illegal. Is that right?
That is exactly correct.
When did the petitioners first file this referendum with the city? Because as I understand the process, they had to first file something, giving us notice of what they were going to do, and then go out and get the signatures. Is that right?
That's correct.
When did they first file something?
December 9, 2008.
I'm just playing devil's advocate here a little. We knew back in December then what they were going to try and do. Could we have then gone and sought a judicial opinion, basically supporting what you're saying, Mr. Jerwic, that the substance of what they're asking for is unconstitutional and illegal, and prevented this last three months of stuff and not be in a position we are today? Could we have foreseen what was coming and tried to get a judge to say, "What you're asking for is illegal and unconstitutional, and I'm not going to allow you to go further in the process"?
The best answer I can give you to this question is this is a very dynamic process. When a petition shows up, the automatic presumption isn't that it's illegal or it contains bad subject matter. The automatic thing that you do is you look the technical things first. Have they met the dates? Did they meet the signatures? Have they submitted it? And then research goes into whether or not the petition is sufficient for legal matters. In this particular case, I don't think it's any secret, and since you raised a question, I don't know if there's any way to dodge it now. It's an 800-pound elephant in the room. There was an attempt, and has been an ongoing attempt, to resolve this. And because of an attempt to resolve it is inconsistent with what I'm doing today, we didn't do it until today. There was, I think, the reason you're hearing it today instead of earlier, or a court hearing it earlier, is because it was everybody's hope that this could be resolved. It's apparent, at least to me, that it's not going to be resolved. And in order to give the petitioner's committee an adequate chance to go to court, because I believe... I believe that's probably what they want to do, I haven't discussed it with them, this will give them a chance and a court a chance to resolve it. Are there other methods for doing it? There probably are. But at this point in time, this is the one I'm recommending to the city council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Brad, there's $74 million of debt. That is redevelopment agency's debt. If they are dissolved, does the city of Las Vegas have any obligations on that debt?
In my opinion, legally, no. But I will tell you that the chaos that will ensue from a revenue stream suddenly evaporating that is committed to over $80 million in financial obligations will trigger a wave of lawsuits that will make previous civil cases in this state pale by comparison.
And those bonds will be declared in default if there was no income stream?
They might. The city would probably have some very difficult choices to make. One of the difficult choices a city might have to make is whether or not the black eye that it receives as a result of its association with the agency is worth bailing the agency, even though it doesn't have an obligation to do so. This becomes a very, very, very complicated mess. And believe me, bondholders will be upset, regulators will be upset. You're not going to be any too happy at the end of the day when you have to face the potential decision of what do you do to replace this revenue stream? And given what's happened in the country already, it's just almost inconscionable to me personally that we would leave people, you know, $80 million in the lurch. But that's why these laws, when you make a contract, you make a deal, you say, "If you do this, we'll do this." In this case, if you buy these bonds, you make this deal, knowing you're going to receive tax increment, we'll pay them. That's it.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Gerbick?
Let me proceed to the initiative petition. Initiative petitions propose laws. And initiative petitions have rules that govern what kind of laws can be proposed. The Nevada Constitution addresses this. And let me read that portion. The people reserved, I'm sorry, this is Article 19, Section 2, Subsection 1 of the Nevada Constitution, quote, "The people reserve to themselves the power to propose by initiative petition statutes and amendments to statutes and amendments to this constitution and to enact or reject them all at polls." That is the portion of the Constitution that allows citizens, not just councils and legislators to make laws, citizens can. And it goes on to say that they are further reserved to the registered voters of each county, each municipality, as to all local, special, and municipal legislation of every kind and for such county and municipality. It sounds like a lot of legal gobbledygook, but citizens can propose legislation. Case law and everything interpreted in that says bluntly, "The initiative power applies only to legislation; however, it does not extend to administrative acts." Why is that relevant? Because that's exactly what this initiative petition does. It extends to administrative acts. Let's talk about the first part of it. The first part of this petition, just like the petition in 1995, seeks to strip the council of its ability to sit with its second hat on as a redevelopment agency, take away the agency's powers to run the agency as the council, and delegate it to the citizens of the city of Las Vegas. Let's talk about the law. State statute creates the ability to have redevelopment agencies. State statute says if you're going to have a redevelopment agency, the board can be comprised of two things. You pick. Number one can be you. You, the city council, wear a second hat, and you are the agency. But if you choose not to be the agency, you can appoint a board to be the agency. So a board appointed by the council, or the council sitting as a board, those are the two methods prescribed by state law. And under rules of statutory construction and the fact that we are a charter city subject to Dillon's rule, you cannot pick another option that you aren't explicitly given in state law. So if you wanted to pass a law to give your agency powers to the citizens, you couldn't because state law says you can only have two. It doesn't give you option three to give them to the citizens because you can't, neither can the voters, number one. Number two, it is delegating administrative authority, administrative duties, to the citizens. That is not what initiatives are for. The second part of this initiative also, in my opinion, delegates administrative authority to citizens, and that makes the citizens responsible for an annual review or appropriation by vote for any project, $2 million or more, that's a lease purchase project. Well, let's not ignore this 800-pound elephant in the room, too. We're talking about City Hall here. How many lease purchase projects do we have? Zero. How many are we discussing right now? One. How many will involve that kind of appropriation? One. What is that project City Hall? So this is saying, in order to pay the lease payments on the City Hall, there has to be a vote of the people to appropriate it. Very interesting because we do budgets every year. Citizens vote every other year in municipal elections. It's hard to imagine how you can appropriate for a year that isn't a budget year. So I think there's a fault there. I think it's also administrative in nature. This is exactly what agencies are supposed to do. You're supposed to vote on the ministerial administrative things like spending money, paying bills and the like. Those are not proper subject matter for delegation to the voters. For those reasons, I believe the initiative petition is also legally defective and should not go on the ballot. I have also written in my memo, because I have not shared with you every bit of legal advice that I have given the clerk, nor all the legal advice I've given this council, and I've thought to myself in my presentation today that by omission of some arguments that we may wish to make in court later, because I do anticipate a court battle, that somebody may argue because you didn't make them, you didn't preserve them. So I want the record to reflect quite clearly that what I presented today is the core of reasons, and there are reasons alone, for these two items, the referendum and the initiative, to not go on the ballot. But there are other legal issues as well. I'm not going to go into detail now, but there is a single subject matter test in the state of Nevada. You can only have one single subject in your question. I think that the initiative petition contains a multiple of subjects and may be in violation of that provision. There's also an argument to be raised as to whether or not the initiative petition, like the referendum petition, impairs an existing contract. There is a development agreement in place right now. We haven't got a final lease purchase agreement done, but there's a development agreement in place with Forest City, and other development agreements in place on the site. And they may well be, when I say the site, the 61 acres, they may well be impaired by the initiative petition. And therefore, I believe that those arguments we wish to raise, along with several others, which I won't even go into at this time. I also want to put into the record so that nobody thinks this is some strange creature and you're just making this up as you go along, a complete record of what this council did in 1995. What I'm going to submit to the clerk is already part of the public record, but it's the minutes of the council meeting of August 16, 1995. It's a memo from me to the city council that's the backup material for that discussion item, and it's the complete discussion, including my recommendation. These items are so similar, it's not even funny. The referendum in 95, almost exactly like this one, sought to get rid of the agency. Initiative petition in 95 sought to delegate the powers of the agency to the citizens of the city of Las Vegas. The only thing different about this one is this particular initiative goes a bit further and talks specifically about appropriations for lease purchase projects and things like that. So it goes even further into the administrative quagmire that it's not subject matter for initiative petitions. I want to file a copy of that with the clerk. I also have copies to distribute to the council.
That one go to court?
No, but the court, with the Attorney General said it's no good. It ended with the Attorney General opinion.
It's no good.
Yeah, was it? Right.
In 1995, I stood before this council and made a briefer presentation than the one I have made this morning. I ended that presentation with a recommendation. In 1995, I said that I believe that both the initiative petition and the referendum petition should not be adopted as the laws of the city council, and further that the council should take a vote today stating that, one, you will not adopt it as the law of the city, and, two, that in your motion, order the city clerk not to place either of these items on the ballot for the reasons I've just stated. I feel a little déjà vu standing up here today because that is my exact recommendation today. I would ask, if there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, but it is my recommendation that, one, you take a motion to deny Bill Number 2009-8, sending a clear message that you are not accepting the referendum as the law of the city. That, two, you take a motion regarding Item Number 56, which would be a motion, if I could be so bold as to recommend it, to follow the advice of your legal counsel and direct the city clerk to send a letter to the petitioner's committee notifying them that neither the referendum nor the initiative will be placed on the ballot of the city of Las Vegas per consideration by the voters on June 2 of this year. Finally, a motion to strike the other two items. One, to accept the certification. I think the record's pretty clear that the certification only said that the votes, the signatures are sufficient, said nothing more. We're saying today in queer, unequivocal terms that the subject matter of those initiatives and referendum is illegal, unconstitutional, and not properly the subject of a vote of the citizens. And also strike the line item that would create a committee to write the yes or no question because since it's not going to be on a ballot, we don't need a yes or no question. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions of the council.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments this time?
Yes, Mayor Goodman?
All right. Senator Barlow?
Mr. Gerbick, just for clarification once again, you had mentioned two areas in which the council can move forward with establishing a board, one being electing ourselves, and the second being through appointment. Give us some examples of some appointments or boards in which you're referencing.
Let's take, for example, housing authority. You're enabled under state law to have a housing authority. You can appoint that board, and nothing prohibits you from appointing yourself. North Las Vegas has got a housing authority where the housing authority is the North Las Vegas City Council, or at least at some point in time was. We've got one that is the Las Vegas City Council. It's citizens that you appointed. So there are boards, you know, created by state law that you're allowed to have, that you're allowed to appoint within a certain range prescribed by state law. The range prescribed by state law for a redevelopment agency, the city doesn't have to have one, chose to have one. If you're going to have one, you have to have a board. The board, according to state law, can either be you as the council, or it can be citizens that you appoint. It doesn't give you option three, all the citizens of the city of Las Vegas.
And secondly, and thank you for that, and secondly, earlier during the redevelopment agency, Mr. Scott Adams came before us and presented a very powerful depiction of where the city has come from, from the origination of the redevelopment agency to where we are today and where we're going as far as the future. There has been millions of dollars pumped into the redevelopment agency since its existence, and there's going to be billions of dollars coming down the pipeline in the future, currently and into the future. If, in fact, this item does go before the voters and the RDA is taken out, just reiterate, what happens to the future development and those dollars and those jobs that Mr. Adams so eloquently displayed before us today?
Pardon my French, but the old saying is, "It all goes to hell in a hand card." There is no way to predict the outcome of a dissolution of the agency. As I said, quite honestly, the immediate thing that's going to happen are the people that we have TIF agreements with and the people that we have bond obligations to are going to come forward. You're going to find, obviously, there'd be a complete inability to sell any bonds or finance any projects. In fact, that exists right now. You know, I work with your finance director, and I work with our bond council regularly on these items, and every time you have something like a petition like this that's out there that could potentially do something to harm the agency, you need to make a disclosure to the people that might buy the bonds. And in a market as twitchy as the market we live in right now, it makes it almost impossible to finance anything. So the immediate consequence, just by circulating these petitions, you scare people away from backing your redevelopment. If one of them ever passed and a court didn't stop it, like I say, it would be all gloves off. There'd be a lot of people fighting, and we'd be right in the middle of it.
Thank you.
Yes, Senator Wilson?
Thank you. Mr. Gerbick, you are the city attorney for the city of Las Vegas, are you not?
When I showed up to work this morning, I was.
You've been our city attorney for how long?
Seventeen years in August.
And you are this body. We are a body. We are a board. You are our legal advisor, are you not?
That's correct.
We are your client.
Correct.
If this gets into a court of law, as the city of Las Vegas being a party to an action, you will be our lawyer, will you not?
Correct.
And you've consulted with other lawyers regarding this. It's not just Brad Gerbick who does a little legal research and comes before us and says, "In my opinion, this is what you should do." You've consulted with other lawyers in this community about the strength and the validity of your position, have you not?
I have.
And you feel very comfortable in advising us of these matters, do you not?
I do feel very comfortable. Let me state that both in 1995 and today, I consulted with our bond counsel, John Swenside and his firm. I've had them do research for us. I've had them review our research. I believe, and I spoke to John yesterday, he is fortunately being able to enjoy a vacation with his son in Orlando, Florida right now, so could not be here. But I asked him if I could represent on the record that he agrees with our legal conclusion that the referendum is unconstitutional because it impairs our bond obligations, and agrees with our conclusion that the initiative petitions are not subject matter for the ballot. He said, "I could represent to this council. He does agree with those legal positions, and he has researched it." I've also talked with private counsel who represent other clients that also have an interest in seeing redevelopment go forward. They have done research. We have discussed it, and they agree, and I believe you may hear from them this morning if the mayor wants to take any public comment on this.
So you have not heard from any other lawyers or learned counsel that have an opinion differently from yours?
Nobody that I've talked to has an opinion differently. I will go out on a limb on this one and speculate, the petitioner's committee is going to assure us, heck, have a different legal opinion, but that's just the nature of it. But I will tell you that we have done a lot of careful research on this. This is probably too much detail for you. I want to point out in my memo, for example, I cite a case in here that I had also cited back in 1995, the Foreman versus Eagle Drugs case. You're going to probably hear counsel in the very near future say, "Oh, that's been overturned." They're still citing the same case. Part of this case has been overturned. I'm real aware of that, but the part I cited for hasn't. So you're going to hear a lot of stuff. We've done our homework. We've done our research. We've read our cases, and I believe that we are legally correct.
The reason I ask you this question, just to conclude, is that it's not an easy thing, I don't know how my colleagues feel, to reject what a certain number of citizens in the city of Las Vegas has asked to do, and that is to be able to vote in a democratic way on something. And what you're basically telling us is to not listen to the voters, in a sense. Not that they haven't followed the right process, and not that we don't believe in a democratic process, but because what other people are asking the voters to potentially vote on is illegal and unconstitutional. So it's not an easy thing for us to reject what our citizens have done by way of a referendum and initiative process, but in your learned opinion, what the voters would be asked to do is just that. It's illegal and unconstitutional, and that's why you're giving us this opinion, to reject that.
That's correct. And don't get me wrong, I cast no aspersions on the petitioner's committee or anyone associated with trying to propose this. I'm merely addressing the law. I can tell you that clearly, this is what councils do from time to time. You have to make the very difficult decision of following or not following the advice of council when it comes to allowing things to go on your ballot. Our law says, "This is your election. This is your ballot. You control it. This isn't someone else. This is your clerk sitting right here that sponsors this election." And so you have the ultimate control over what goes on and what doesn't go on. If somebody disagrees, there's a remedy for that. They can go to court, and that's perfectly fine with me. But I will tell you, in 1995, this council differently constituted, had to make that same difficult call. In Reno recently, the city council had to make that same call. In Carson City, the council made that call. In Mesquite, Nevada, the council made that call. And across this country, I could probably name just about every city at some point in time, has had to say no to a petition that was illegal.
And tell us again what happened in the 1995-- And tell us again what happened in the 1995 situation. A different council, obviously, accepted your advice. It was not put on the ballot, and what happened procedurally after that?
After that, nothing. The petitioners in that particular case did not take us to court. I think that was the end of it. They could have. They didn't. But again, we were at a point in the process back then, if my memory serves correctly, where they had turned in the petitions. They had sufficient signatures. They had everything this has got going for it, but the same flaw. The core of it was illegal.
For the record, Your Honor, I was here in 1995.
All right. All right, fine. Anybody else want to be heard?
I want to make a couple comments.
Certainly, please.
Mr. Jervick, does it make any difference how these petitioners want about getting the petition signed?
If you're asking differences, that would make a difference would be getting signatures outside the City of Las Vegas. That'd make a difference. Differences in not informing individuals what the petitions would do. And by the way, that's another legal argument we'll make, is that we do not believe the petitioners committee informed people that the referendum, which dissolves the agency, would impair the bonds and everything else. So that's another issue we will raise.
But again, though, they was told, I had a petitioner come to my house, and my wife was told that through this new city hall, what we was doing in essence was taking money away from the school district. And I think those people that was here this morning and were watching this on TV at home, I think through Mr. Wilson as well as Scott Adams, it was showed what the RDA has done for the school district because of the redevelopment area. And I think that they was misinformed, the petitioners themselves were misinformed when they came around trying to get the petition signed. And I don't think that, to me, I don't really feel like they even knew what they was doing when they come around and asked people to sign the petition.
Let me come on on that for a moment with your permission, and part of this will be a little bit outside my attorney role. I was present at the Debt Management Commission when the city made a presentation and to get the permission to go forward with the bonds or with the cop's certificates of participation. It was apparent to me that very learned people who sit on that Debt Management Commission were not aware of the real way redevelopment works when it comes to sharing that tax increment with education, sharing that money with other things. There's a belief out there that whatever the tax base was when the agency was formed, everything above that just goes to the agency and it doesn't go anywhere else, and that's just not true. And so there is probably some education that just needs to go on. That's up to you to decide how to do it. I also know that, I heard at the last meeting, a representative from one of the groups supporting the petition and against the city hall project, got up and started talking about what this project was and what it wasn't, that these were revenue bonds, and that there was a deed restriction on the property under the city hall that said it could only be used as a city hall. Well, the fact of the matter is, they were looking at documents that had long since been redrafted. In an early draft of the agreement, for the lease purchase agreement, we did put a deed restriction in saying the building we're going to lease could only be used as a city hall. And then we found out later on that that wouldn't fly, because if we move out, you can't have that deed restriction because the owners of the building are going to want to lease it to someone else. And we were told to take it out, and it had been taken out before that person got up at the podium and made that representation to this council. So councilman, when it comes to lack of information or improper information, I can only tell you, and I just assume it's mistakes on people's part for not being careful enough to read everything, we have had public records requests of the City of Las Vegas going on for the last three or four months. And quite often, when you pull that kind of information out of the city and the volume it's been given under the public records requests, you have to very carefully sit down and figure out which one of these is the most recent draft, which is the most current iteration. You rely on the wrong one, you give misinformation. And I heard at the last meeting a considerable amount of misinformation being given out about what the project was and what it wasn't, because they were pulling drafts and relying on them for things that had long since been renegotiated or weren't in the deal anymore. And that's just going to continue to go on. I don't know what to do about it except for take every opportunity we can, which is why I spend a few moments right now to correct the record.
Anybody else?
Yes, Mayor Goodman.
Captain Borla.
Thank you. Mr. Jervick, does the community citizen groups and citizens have the opportunity or the constitutional right to sign a petition if, in fact, they disagree or agree with something?
Everybody has a right to circulate one. Everybody has a right to sign one or not sign one. But again, the subject matter itself is still relevant. Just because we have a right, just because you have a right to propose laws, doesn't mean as a city council, you can propose any law you want. Just because the Congress has the right to propose laws, doesn't mean they can propose any law they want. And so in this particular case, that's what we're saying. Petitioners are perfectly within their right to form a committee, perfectly within their right to circulate a petition, but it's got to contain subject matter that's legal, and in this case, it's not, in my opinion.
Okay. And that's exactly what I was leading towards, because the last thing that I want, at least from me and the council, is the fact that we're considering rejecting the hard work and effort that went into whether we stand for it or not, we believe in it or not, still the residents still having an opportunity to move forward with a petition that they feel very strongly for or against. However, in this case, what has been presented according to what you're sharing with us here today is a document that is illegal.
That's my opinion.
And let me just say this, and if, in fact, it were, everything was in place, what would your recommendation be?
If everything were legal?
Yes.
I wouldn't be standing here today.
Okay.
If this were legal, I wouldn't be standing here. That's what you pay me for.
Thank you for that.
One of the things I do want to point out, when you talk about the efforts that people put into this, and the council raised earlier, what were your other options and things like that, let me point out that I do not consider the group that put this together to be without resources. They potentially are well-heeled enough to be aware of law out there, Attorney General opinions out there. When I read in the Sun newspaper on January 9th of this year that one of the members of the petitioners committee was unfamiliar with the 1995 Attorney General opinion, when the facts are so strikingly similar, was surprising to me. When you talk about, and I also received letters, by the way, from council, from a group associated with the petitioners. I also received letters saying, after the mayor made a comment, "I think that this is, they have legal sufficiency problems." I received a letter saying, "You've got to tell us what they are or you can't raise them later on." Now, if they made a mistake in the procedures, they're probably right. Clerk would have to tell them. Here's how you have to form a committee. You have to live in the city, you have to this, you have to this, and here's how many signatures you need. There's no law out there that I'm aware that says that we have to tell them how to write it to make it better. That's the risk that people take when they circulate these things. If they want to put together a petition that doesn't have subject matter in it that is considered legally sufficient, and there's been plenty of research out here that goes almost right to the heart of this one, including the 1995 Attorney General opinion in the record of the city council, I'm sorry, but that's something that should have been done before this thing was circulated.
Any other comments or questions? All right, before I call for the vote, I'd just like to say that I am saddened by the events which have brought us to this point. Sadened that the redevelopment agency, about what you heard this morning of its great success in changing the face of the city and taking us into the major leagues, probably the most successful development that's occurring in the valley today, is the subject of being placed in jeopardy. I'm really saddened by all those folks who raised their hands this morning, who are the backbone of our community, the hard workers who helped build and make this the world-class city that all of us thirst for are out of work. I'm saddened by the fact that there are jobs which would be created with other members of the union movement, which could have been placed into jeopardy had we placed this on the ballot, in effect giving it our affirmation that it's legal and appropriate for voter consideration. The bottom line is this, we're going to do everything we can to keep the city going in the right direction, to make it a great city with great buildings, housing, great people, with great minds, who will address horrible diseases like will be taking place at the Louisville Brain Institute with the Cleveland Clinic's involvement, will continue to build wonderful cultural centers like the Fifth Street Elementary School and the Performing Arts Center. Those things will take place, and you people will be back to work if this council has anything to do with it. With that, I'm going to turn to the mayor pro tem. Your motion, please.
Yes, Your Honor. I believe, Brad, you want a motion for item 71st?
Yes, I think item number 70 should be taken first. That is the bill, and again, my recommendation is for denial.
I move to follow the advice of the city attorney given us today and vote to deny item 70, bill number 2009-08.
All right, please vote. Please vote. You want us to vote again? All right, let's vote, please.
That's why we need a new city hall.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I also think that there are a couple more motions before...
Wait, we didn't vote, we do need to do a city hall. It passed, okay, motion carries.
That was on item number 70. I think that we also need a motion, item number 56.
Further under item 56, I move to follow the advice of the city attorney and order the city clerk to not place the referendum and issues proposed by the Las Vegas Taxpayer Accountability Committee filed this through the ninth, 2008, on the ballot for consideration.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Motion carries.
On...
I'm sorry, that was 50...
Based on the advice of the council and the last two votes taken by this council on items 70 and 56, I move to strike item number 55 and not approve item number 14 based on the legal insufficiency of the subject matter of the petition.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Vote again, please. Post. Motion carries.
Thank you. I just want to state for the record, Your Honor, that based on the votes taken by this council today, we will draft a letter for the clerk's signature to be sent to the petitioners committee immediately by certified mail notifying them that neither the referendum nor the initiative will be placed on the ballot this year.
Thank you. And you're all welcome to stay for the rest of the interesting council meeting. We'll go items 13... No, I don't want to open it up. Items 13 through 44, with the exception of item 14, are on the consent agenda. I'll wait it out. It'll be in recess for two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Testing, one, two.
Is it going to be all union? All union 100%? All right.
Testing, one, two. Testing, one, two.
Fine, I'm going to call items 13 through 44 again. With the exception of item 14, we were on the consent agenda. All these items are considered to be routine. They're recommended for approval by the departments. They may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items that the council wishes to bring forward off the consent agenda at this time? All right, seeing none, mayor pro tem.
Yes, Your Honor, I make a motion to approve items 13 through 44, with exceptions of 14, 17, and 18, with all conditions.
All right, let's vote on that, please.
And 42 and 43.
Thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Post. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Item 45 is a public hearing to determine the advisability of granting a telecommunications service franchise to Level 3 Communications LLC pursuant to the purpose, character, term, time, and conditions of the proposed franchise agreement. Mr. Jervick, were you going to make this presentation? Is he here? Mr. Redline, or you? Anybody want to be heard making the presentation?
No, Your Honor, honestly, I'm not familiar with this item, and I don't think our office was intending to make a presentation.
All right, well, it's a public hearing, folks. If anybody wants to be heard on it, I'm happy to hear from you now. This is a public hearing concerning the advisability of granting a telecommunications service franchise to Level 3 Communications LLC. All right. If nobody wants to come forward, then we'll go on to the next item. Which is item number 50. Which is item number 50. Public hearing to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located at 232 South Crestline Drive in the amount of $2,958.25 and assess a maximum of $39,700 in daily civil penalties to property owner's Fremont investment and loan. This is in Ward 1. Mr. Smith.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Devin Smith, Manager of Neighborhood Response.
Good morning.
The purpose and background is that the condition of this property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Neighborhood Services declared the property in violation of started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Neighborhood Services hired Level X, Inc. to remove high weeds in all yards, refuse waste in all areas, repair perimeter fence and gate, and remove graffiti from building. To date, there have been seven inspections conducted at this location. The value of the property based on the sale date of October 2007 was $199,900. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the report of expenses to include $1,115 invoice for Level X, Inc. services in addition to other fees assessed for a total of $2,958.25 and consider assessing a maximum of $39,700 in daily civil penalties.
All right, are there any questions to Mr. Smith? Folks, a public hearing, if anyone would like to be heard, we'd be happy to hear from you. All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing then. Councilwoman Tarkanian?
This is a bank-owned property, or I should say a financial institution-owned property, and too many times we have a situation where someone can't keep up the payments, or a home is foreclosed on, or someone leaves, and the banks don't realize the effect of their not keeping up the property which they at that time owned upon the neighborhood and what it does for all the other people living there and how much they're losing in investment in their properties. So I move for the amount of $2,958.25 from the general fund and assess a maximum, and I'm going for the maximum here, of $39,700 in daily civil penalties.
All right, that's the motion. Let's vote, please. Motion carries, thank you. Item 51 is a public hearing to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for the vacant or abandoned building located at 4168 Silver Dollar Avenue, Unit 1, in the amount of $2,338 and assess a maximum of $96,050 in daily civil penalties. The property owner is RFH La Paz LLC. Do you want to have both items called at this time?
We could, if you'd like.
All right, item 52 is a public hearing to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for the vacant or abandoned buildings located at 4152 Silver Dollar Avenue, Units 5 and 7, 4168 Silver Dollar Avenue, Units 2 and 8, 2 through 8, pardon me, 4186 Silver Dollar Avenue, Units 1 through 4 and 7, in the amount of $22,243 and assess a maximum of $1,277,750 in daily civil penalties. The property owner is RFH La Paz LLC, and that's in Ward 1 as well.
Again, Mayor and Council, Devin Smith, Manager of Neighborhood Response. The purpose and background is that the condition of the property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Neighborhood Services declared the property in violation of started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Neighborhood Services... Excuse me, I'm trying to read from both cases here, just to make sure I cover everything. The Department of Neighborhood assessed fees according to Title IX. To date, there have been eight inspections conducted at this location. The value of the property based on the sale date of August 2008 was $1,235,500. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the report of expenses for the fees for a sum of $22,243 on item 52 and $2,338 on item 51 and consider assessing a maximum of $1,277,750 in daily civil penalties.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions to Mr. Smith? Are you the property owner by any chance?
No.
I'm going to ask for the property owner first. Is anybody here on behalf of RFH La Paz LLC? All right, seeing none, it is a public hearing, yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Malcolm Perez, 9237 Evergreen Canyon, and I have an interest in 4152 Silver Dollar, Unit 6. Mayor Pro Tem, about three meetings ago, you talked about a certain property in your ward that was a thorn in your side for the past few months. This has been a thorn, a javelin in my side for the last eight months. As you've seen by the pictures, this owner does not care about the other owners, the people that live there, anyone in that community. The units were left open when Neighborhood Services went out there the first time, July 18th. People were arrested. Again, the guy has now gone in and painted the properties, shopping carts all over the place. He really doesn't care. I just hope that you guys go for the full amount of what Neighborhood Services is suggesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard on this? Public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. This is the Councilwoman Tarkanian's word.
This area has been a severe problem to us in an area where our King Project has occurred near Clark High School, where we have a community working very, very hard to improve the surroundings in which they live. We've had an owner here that has not followed through when we've made the contacts with him, and that for four months, four months, we had the individuals without gas. Now, four months going through November. And I don't know if you guys know what it's like in your house in November in Vegas when you don't have any heating. And that's what they went through. I had many calls during the time. It took us a very long time. It took very long effort on the part of Neighborhood Services to complete this. So I move for the payment of all of the abatement fees and the field inspection fees, which comes to $24,581. Now, we're taking both of these at the same time, right?
That's correct.
So that would also be plus the $2,338.
All right, and as for the...
And then I would plus... I would give... I move also then to have $500,000 in daily civil fees for the places where we had renters without gas for so long and another full $96,000 on the other units.
All right, thank you very much.
It was $96,000, $96,050, and then $500,000 on the other one. And I base that upon mainly the fact that this owner did not respond and the fact that those people were without gas. And I really consider the fact, if we have an owner who does not provide gas so people can live in a healthful fashion, I call that a slumlord. And particularly too because there has been no effort, as I've seen and I've gone by there several times, to improve landscaping and the amenities that people would expect in a situation like that. So that's my motion.
All right, let's vote on item 51 first. Motion carries, and 52, let's vote on that now. Post, please. Motion carries, thank you.
Your Honor, if I may, just for the record, I just want to make it clear that I've had contact with this gentleman. He did agree to pay the fees that are owed to the city. He has set up payment arrangements. He's supposed to have them paid. His obligation to us is one year, and at that time, he's supposed to have all of his fees and everything paid to the city of Las Vegas. So the property is supposed to be complete with all the repairs that need to be done the end of March, and the Councilwoman had said that possibly she would like to bring this back for a review to see...
In fact, that's what I was going to say. I should have added that to the other part, and could I just make an additional motion then, which is that we would have a review of these cases at the April 15 City Council Meeting to ensure that these properties are in full compliance, and if not, we will then review the fees.
All right, then, Ms. Bridges, do we need a new vote on that?
Yes.
All right, so that would be... With that addition, let's vote on item number 51. Post, please. And item number 52, let's vote, please. Post, please. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. How about that?
Your Honor?
Excuse me?
Can I tell the clerk to let the record reflect affirmative vote on the other two items associated with this, please?
Okay. All right, item 53 is discussion and possible action concerning the status of the 2009 legislative session. This pertains to all wards. I'll be back in a moment.
Good morning, Mayor, Members of the Council. Chris Knight, Director of Building and Safety, and I will attempt within my character to be as pithy as possible. Wanted to share with you the bills and the legislative session, that there were questions during briefings about the 120-day calendar, just a couple of deadlines that are coming up. March 9th is a deadline for the legislators' bill drafting, with March 16th being a deadline for legislators' bill introductions. And what that means is after March 16th, legislators will not be able to introduce any more legislation of their bills that are sponsored by them. The committee bill drafting deadline is March 16th, and March 23rd is the committee bill introduction deadline. So after March 23rd, we will have the bills that will be working for this session. And that is driven by, more than anything else, an April 10th deadline for passage of all bills out of the Committee of the First House. We've been monitoring about 213 Assembly bills and 157 Senate bills, just to let you know that. Quickly, on our City of Las Vegas bills, AB 44, which is a bill that addresses our ability to have a stabilization fund, that bill was heard last Tuesday in Assembly Government Affairs. No action was taken on the bill. We had testimony and we had support on the bill from the Nevada taxpayers and the City of Sparks. AB 48, which allows us to have construction contract disputes settled by processes other than arbitration, again, was heard last Tuesday. Our City Attorney testified. We received support on that bill from North Las Vegas, Clark County, and Boulder City. There was testimony and opposition. The lobby team is working with those who had opposition to the bill to work out an amendment to address their opposition. Again, no action was taken on the bill other than that. AB 94 is the Tourism Improvement District Bill that extends the deadline on that for the City of Las Vegas, and that has not come forward, and we are working with the Chairman of the Committee to schedule a hearing for that bill, in which our Office of Business Development will be testifying. Couple of other bills that I wanted to share with you real quick. Senate Bill 144, our Chief of Fire Department has been working with the Chief of Police, with Sheriff Gillespie, to work out a compromise on that bill. As of last night, an extension was granted by the Committee to allow us more time for Chief Gammon to work out the details on that bill relating to the bomb squads, and a further report will be brought to you by Chief Gammon once he gets everything worked out with the sheriff. AB 130 is a Metro Physical Affairs Bill. Again, it affects the role of our City Council members on physical affairs. We reported that to you at the last council. No action on that bill, but we have been expressing our concerns to the sponsor of the bill and working to get something resolved on that. Outside of that, I will cut the briefing short, except to talk about one bill that's of interest, SB 15, which is a bill that allows us or requires us to cooperate with the establishment of a fixed guideway route between Henderson and North Las Vegas that would run through Clark County and North Las... And the City of Las Vegas to North Las Vegas. We are in support of that bill and working to identify how that would actually be implemented and where the funding sources would come from on that. And then we are aware of some other bills out there that are going to be proposed that will be coming forth to... That affect our municipal elections and the dates of our municipal elections. We will be monitoring those bills and providing you with a further update on that. So, real briefly, that's a quick update on our legislative status, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Knight. Any questions for Mr. Knight or any comment? All right, then, may I have a motion, please, to accept this?
Yes, Your Honor, I want to thank Christopher's report. If there are any other questions, I'll make a motion to accept this report.
Very good. Let's vote, please. Post?
I lost my mouse, Mrs. Knight.
Motion carries, thank you. I'm going to recall item number 45. 45 is a public hearing to determine the advisability of granting a telecommunications service franchise to Level 3 Communications LLC pursuant to the purpose, character, term, time, and conditions of the proposed franchise agreement. Mr. Ware?
Mayor, Council, Christopher Ware from the City Attorney's Office. This is a fairly standard franchise agreement for a telecommunications provider. In this case, this provider, Level 3, has actually been in the city for 10 years. They occupy a small portion of our right-of-way. The reason we're here today is because their current agreement expires this week, and so we've updated them into the basic standard format for our telecommunications providers. It'll be a 15-year agreement. It will have all the usual basic terms to it, such as indemnification, bonding, insurance, and franchise fees, and with that, we would recommend approval.
All right, very good. I don't... It's just a public hearing. There's no vote on this, as I understand it, so... Would anybody, if they heard Mr. Ware's presentation, would they like to be heard at the public hearing? All right, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now call item 54, reporting possible action on the update on progress of the Fundamental
Good morning, Mayor and Members of the Council. Today is a follow-up from your first meeting in January to give you an overview of where we are financially and also to give you an update on what progress we've made in implementing the Fundamental Service Review recommendations. As you know, over a year ago, the economy entered into a recession, and if the consensus of the economists are accurate, we're likely to be in that recession for a while longer, at least through the mid-part of this year and quite possibly through to the end of the year. This is a little bit unique. There have been about 10 recessions. Most of those average a shorter duration than the one we've been in so far. The longest ones have lasted around three years, and the Great Depression in the '30s lasted longer than that. So we're keeping a very close eye on what we're hearing regarding the economic reports for our country, as well as our state and this region. And most recently, there have been reports that the national economy is expecting a continued downturn of about 2% for the balance of the year, with a projected upsurge of about 2% in the following year. So I think we have a ways to go before we're going to get out of this. I wish that wasn't the message I have to share with you today, but it is what it is, and we're hopeful that it'll turn faster than that, but we're trying to do our best to manage through these tough times. And I have to say that through your visionary leadership and taking very strategic steps since as long ago as December of 2007, we've been trying to be aggressive in our approach towards addressing this economic downturn. And I think it goes without saying that our ability to implement the recommendations of the Fundamental Service Review would absolutely not be possible without the leadership of the Directors and the commitment of our employees, not only to this organization but to this community and to the citizens of this community, in making sure that we provide, continue to provide, services that are critical to them. I have been trying to be clear with our employees as it relates to this economic situation, what the three key things are that we're trying to maintain. One of them is, obviously, to sustain our services to this community. The second leg of the stool, in my mind, is preserving jobs. That may mean getting people in the right jobs, as Mark will share with you in a little bit, as a result of some recent reductions in force that we've been undergoing, but nonetheless, getting the work done that the community needs through the preservation of those jobs, and finally, maintaining our fiscal integrity. And that's really what we're here to talk about today, is how we're pursuing those three fronts. I also think it's important for us to acknowledge some of the courageous leadership of some of our bargaining unit leaders. It's not easy to go back to the table and work out deals when you've already got a deal... deal in the books, and they've been willing to do that, and we've reported on that up to this point. I think we've been very successful with a teamwork approach to solving these problems and to trying to stay ahead of the game as it relates to our efforts on these fronts. We have been aggressive. I couldn't think of a different word to write in my comments today than aggressive in cutting our costs. I was interested to see some of the commentary in the paper earlier this week about cost-cutting efforts, and I think the city has done a remarkable job of that, and I am extremely proud of our department heads and our employees, because but for their efforts in this fiscal year, we would be having a very different conversation right now. We've been holding positions open. We've been cutting back on professional services. We've been cutting back on all of our internal service funds, and that has basically helped us balance our budget this year, despite some significant downturns in revenue that we did not predict going into this budget year. Over the last 18 to 24 months, we've cut our budget by about 9%. That's not a small feat. It takes a lot of people's efforts. It takes a lot of vision, creativity, and innovation, and I think that's what we've done. It also takes a little bit of fortitude to make some decisions about where we're not going to do things any longer, or how we're going to reduce those services in a way that has minimal impact on our customers. One of the key ways we've done that is that we've eliminated about 10% of our positions over the last couple of years. That's not a small feat either, and so that means really being strategic in the positions that we are filling and making sure that we're putting those resources in places where we need to make sure we're sustaining those services. This year alone, the department heads, through their conservatism, have helped us save close to $30 million, above and beyond what you've already directed in the way of budget rescissions along the way. And, as Mark will share with you a little bit later, that's in large part going to help us balance out this major decrease in one of our largest, well, the largest, revenue source that we have at the city. You know, I wish I could report to you today that everything we've done so far yielded us not having to worry about this any longer, that we were in fine shape, and that we, everything we've done has worked, and that we're past the bad point. I don't think that's the case. I think the national economy is sending us that message loud and clear. Just as late as December, our sales tax revenues, year over year, were down almost 18%. It's 50% of our revenues, almost, and that percentage is going down, of our revenues, we rely on sales tax and the consolidated tax proceeds. If we just flatlined that, which Mark will talk about in his part of this presentation, at about a 10% decrease for this year, in that line item alone, that means we would finish at about $225 million out of the sales tax. We're used to getting, you know, $250 million out of that line item, and that's what we budgeted for, for the most part. So this is a significant erosion of one of our key revenue sources, and it's not likely to stop anytime soon. Now, we hope it won't continue this steep a decline, obviously, but we don't anticipate it to reemerge in the next probably 12 to 18 months. We may have a shorter decline, but we don't see this number going up, I guess is my point. Mark is going to go over some of the new financial projections based on these latest economic factors that we've received from the state and from the county. We've outlined an update on our progress in implementing your direction through the course of last year, particularly as recent as October and January, so that you know the impact of your actions to date. We're going to update the financial model for you today, the one that we presented back in October, that prompted us to take our corrective action plan in place for our budget for this year. And this really is a presentation that's a precursor to our budget workshop on the 30th, and I think that's important to know, because we're not done working on this model. There's still some out, things that are not complete yet that we need to work on, some additional data that we will have by March 30th that we don't have today, and we hope that this will help you as you consider some of the issues that we will be briefing you on over the next three weeks in preparation for that budget workshop. So, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Mark to have him go over some of our results and our current financial condition and our financial model.
May I ask a question?
Yes, Councilwoman Wilson. Betsy, before we start with Mark?
Yes, sir.
For the last six or 12 months or so, it's almost like every day we read in the newspaper or see something on the news about companies all over this country laying off employees, and we hear about the big companies that are laying off hundreds or thousands of people. We don't hear about the small companies. We're sure that there are some smaller companies, too, that are laying off people. In the City of Las Vegas, over the last 18 or 24 months, and I know our Building Department is kind of a unique bird, because it got wrapped up real big a few years ago because of all the building and development, but more recently, because of the recession, we've had less and less development, so I understand that department's had to suffer a little. But my question is this, if you can answer, in the last 18 or 24 months, how many employees have we had to lay off?
Mark may be able to correct me if I'm wrong. In this most recent round of reductions in force in the Building and Safety Department, there were 35 impacted positions. We were fortunate enough to be able to place many of those individuals into other positions. Prior to that, I think we had about 40 or so in the first round of layoffs in the Building and Safety Department. I can get you the final number on that. We're looking at about 75 positions that have been impacted through a reduction in force. I think a very significant number for you all to consider is 10% of our workforce. We've been able to, through vacancy management, keep many of those positions, as people naturally retire, move on to other jobs, whatever may happen, hold those positions vacant and either unfund them and close them, or unfund them and freeze them, meaning there is no budget for those 10% of those positions that, in 2008, we had fully budgeted. So, that kind of gives you a little bit of perspective of the magnitude of the efforts that we've undertaken to try and manage without having to lay off individuals.
Most of the people that we've had to subject to reduction in force, we've found other positions for, is that a fair statement?
Or, if I may, or they've elected the voluntary separation plan. So, we have used Betsy's dead right. We are down 300-plus positions, so we've had our reduction in force, too. We just have been able to manage it better by managing our vacancies, being selective about what positions we fill, by offering a voluntary separation plan that gave some affordable options for employees, and I actually get some good news to share with you when I get to that, on what actually happened this last round of Building and Safety. It's really quite remarkable. But bottom line is, your original question was, how many fewer employees do we have today than we did two years ago? About 318. That's a lot of positions.
A lot of services had to be affected by that, or they were fat, and I believe it was the former rather than the latter.
And it could be that there's less demand for service, which is what we're seeing in some parts of our organization. So you're going to see a little bit of everything. You're going to see a little bit of the, we've scaled back on what we were doing, maybe we add additional capacity. We were doing the what-we-wanna-do's in addition to what we should do. You may see a little bit of a rescission in the kind of workload and demands, a huge drop-off in the number of permits being sought, for instance. So you'll see both of those things playing against each other. I think personally that we run a really tight ship here at the City of Las Vegas. It is important for us to stay strategic, and that's what capacity gives you. It gives you the ability to surge when you need to in areas where you need to be able to address things like the Silver Dollar Project, those efforts, so we can ramp up, get the right people working on things quickly to address a health concern and a for-living condition. We want to make sure we try and sustain some of that. We also know, in these tough times, we're trying to maintain our core services and sustain them at maybe not the levels people came to expect in 2006 and '07, but sustain them in a way that's reasonable and still gets the job done. If it's all right, Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to Mark and have him run through a few slides that we put together for your consideration.
Please, Mr. Vincent.
Thank you, Your Honor. For the record, Mark Vincent, acting deputy city manager. You know, Betsy just said it just right with her opening remarks, and I couldn't have said it any better. Hopefully, some of the numbers and diagrams I share with you give you a picture and put some numbers to what she was talking about. First off, I'd like to talk a little bit about what we've done to date, and again, we're talking about cumulative reductions of over $47 million, starting in fiscal year 2008. We started that in mid-year, and let me give a little perspective to this, because this slide doesn't indicate that. But for example, in the public safety reduction, you can see initially we cut back about $8.1 million in '08. We added some back, because we had, we realized we had overcorrected. But that $6.7 million, you see, there is about a 2% reduction to public safety, whereas if you go to the next line down, we're talking about general government, that $18.8 million reduction is a little over a 19% reduction to general government. That's services such as, or functions such as, the legislative function, the city manager's office, finance, HR, IT, but it does include things like field operations and planning and some parts of public works. So this is a significant reduction. That 47.6 does represent about a 9% reduction from where we were in 2008. So, this again is a result of what you have already directed us to do from October, from the October workshop, so that may help to put some numbers on that. Let me talk a little bit about other things that we've done to date. As you know, with your direction last October, we implemented the FSR recommendations that had no personnel costs. I'll report to you a little bit later, but that was about a four, a little over $4 million savings that that did for us. We also created a revenue stabilization fund. We created the fund. We haven't transferred money into it yet. We'll be probably coming back to you shortly with some action items to do that, and one of the reasons were, we had a bill that we had introduced, AB 44, to try to rewrite some of the language in the legislature to give us some flexibility, or at least clarify things like what is a disaster, for example. And so we'll be taking some action on it. We had identified about $47 million we were going to put in the revenue stabilization fund, and you'll see a little bit later that we, as a result of some of the cost savings that we've done from the actions that City Manager Fretwell's talked about, we may have another $25 million or so that we have also saved up. We've delayed our capital project funds, prop projects. We've found a way to either change the timing or the scope of some of these projects so we can minimize some of the operating impacts, and over the five-year period, we expect to save about $27 million as a result of making some of those modifications. I'll be talking more specifically about the voluntary separation program in a second, but just so you know, we expect to save $6.8 million free and clear in 2010 from the 50 voluntary separations that we're going to have. So that's a tremendously successful project, and again, I'll talk a little bit more about that later. And as Betsy mentioned, we've had three reopenings, if you will, of our labor contracts. I'll tell you that the estimated savings in 2010 from those considerations that we renegotiated is going to be about $2 million in 2010, so that's what we've done so far. Let me talk a little bit about the voluntary separation program, because this is, in some respects, pretty remarkable, I think, in terms of the outcome. We had 69 requests. We had 50 that we approved, and let me just talk about the 50 right now. Of the 50, 10 of those came out of Building and Safety. So we had 10 people elect to do voluntary separation in Building and Safety, two of those positions probably weren't even targeted for the reduction. Just keeping with the Building Safety issue, as a result of some other actions that we've taken, I'll talk also in a second about, in terms of adding some positions back, we were able to place about 21 Building and Safety personnel. Some of those were placed, were transferred to other departments, like one of our Fundamental Service Review projects is to consolidate records management. There are some resources that we needed to transfer to the city clerk in order to enable that. We were able to identify three positions in Building and Safety that we could transfer that helped Building and Safety out, but actually helped us meet one of the other objectives we have under Fundamental Service Reviews. The end result was, and this speaks to Councilman Wilson's question earlier, we only actually had to riff, reduce, four people, and three of them actually had offers for reduced positions that they chose not to accept. So, this was a tremendous, the VSP did a couple things for us. It allowed us to have a humane, moral way of dealing with the reduction in workload that we had in Building and Safety, as well as encourage other employees in the non-Building and Safety area to take advantage of the reduction of the voluntary separation program. But I think it's remarkable that Chris had targeted 35 positions, and four only actually had to be reduced, and three of those actually chose to be reduced, because they didn't want to select a lower offer, a lower position. So I think that's a testament to the hard work that Chris and Judy Tuttle and Clodagh East did in that program.
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes, please.
Either one of you, Betsy, maybe you, how does this compare to other voluntary separation programs throughout the valley?
I can share a little bit with you about Henderson, just to give you a little idea. And our, remember, we targeted this specifically so that the savings that we would have in 2009 would pay for the benefits that were going out the door, and as you look at the slide, you can see that our payout cost was $1,005, and we expect to recover in vacancy savings $1,008 in 2009. So this paid for itself. We recovered our costs in the first year. We've recovered our costs within 12 weeks. I understand from research that staff has done, for example, Henderson, they had 57 employees elected their separation at a cost of $3.8 million, and the payback for them will be over 10 months, whereas our payback is less than three months. So, I think our program was very well-received, and it was...
The payout average was about twice ours, so, per person who took advantage of it. At least, that's our understanding. But I think we do need to note that they, I think they're not quite done with theirs yet, because they have an extended period for public safety, so I don't know what those numbers will do to their numbers, but when they look at them in total, but generally, their payout, their payback period's going to be much longer than ours, and the payout per employee is twice what ours was.
And I would mention that some of the savings will be adjusted slightly for overtime and some of the public safety areas, but long-term, over time, we're going to have substantial savings over the next five years from these voluntary separations. So that was a good thing. This slide speaks to a little bit of what Councilman Wilson's question was about originally. If we go back to our original 2009 final budget, the budget you approved that we filed a little less than a year ago, actually, we had funded labor in general fund and non-general fund, $369 million, was 3,215 FTEs. We are now at a staffing level, using the '09 numbers, '09 pricing of labor, at a level of $338 million and 2,897 employees. So, we have essentially unfunded, in one form or another, about 10% of our workforce, saving about 8% of our labor costs, and that, we've already, those actions have already taken. Now, I mentioned a little bit earlier, as we've gone through this and as we've sustained substantial reductions in staffing, there's always a concern about, did we take those reductions in the right places? Are there places where we needed to go back and reassess, that we needed to add positions back in certain areas? And when we met here recently, about a week and a half ago, we took, made some decisions about adding back about 88 positions that are vacant and going back and actually funding them either for this year or the start of the next fiscal year. These numbers include that. This is after adding back some of those vacant positions that we have, or are about to tell departments that they can go ahead and fill those strategically.
What I'm trying to get at, Mark, without belaboring the point too much, is from this graph, it shows that we're, we have about 300-plus fewer FTEs, full-time employees. But of that 300, some of those, if you will, and we're talking about numbers, were found other positions or voluntarily separated, correct? other positions or voluntarily separated, correct?
That's correct.
I'm trying to determine how many people actually lost their jobs unwillingly, and we couldn't find a new place for them, or did not voluntary separate.
I don't know the exact number, but I believe it's well under 10% of that 318 that actually had to be --
Okay, so maybe 30 or so. And my point is that the City of Las Vegas has done a pretty darn good job in the last couple of years to have only lost about 10 employees. Maybe I'm oversimplifying.
We're trying to get, you know, as Jim Cullen says in Good to Great, you've got to get the right people in the right seats on the bus. And that's what we're trying to do. It doesn't do us any good, if we have work to be done in parts of the City of Las Vegas, to let people go when we've invested in them, when we've trained them, and they're committed to us as an organization and a community. If we can find a job in this city that they can do that we need to have done, that's what we're trying to do.
And I want to just circle back to what I said a few minutes ago. By comparison to other private entities that are firing hundreds and hundreds and thousands and thousands of employees all across this country for the last six to 12 months, every day you open up the newspaper, you see it. I think we've done a pretty good job to avoid that kind of thing.
You know, we can't avoid the situation when you've got major drop-offs in activity and business demands, if you will. We can't justify continuing to keep people in those positions when there's not work for them to do. Where there is work to be done in the city, we're trying to get those individuals into those jobs so that we keep them employed, we don't continue to contribute to the growth in the unemployment rate here in Southern Nevada. So I think we're all on the same page in trying to attain that goal.
Okay.
Mayor Goodman?
Councilor Borla?
Just for clarification, you go back to the last slide. I know FTEs, full-time employees, but what is MMs?
I'm sorry, that was millions of dollars. Those numbers, the 300.9, that's $300.9 million. The 2,576 FTEs in 2009's original budget priced out with benefits at $300.9 million.
Okay, so MM stands for millions of dollars. Great, thank you.
Sorry, I should have explained that. That's a financial thing, I'm sorry. To give a brief update of where we are with the FSR, again, I think we mentioned, or Betsy might have mentioned, we've implemented about 57% of the 106 recommendations that you approved us to implement last October. Most of those did not have direct employee impacts. In other words, we weren't going to lay off or reduce people. That saved us about $4 million. But there's a couple of things that I think is important as we talk about, as Betsy talked about, putting the right people in the right seats. There are a few things that we still have going that look more along the lines of reorganizational things. I mentioned, for example, the three staff we transferred from building and safety to our records management center. We really believe that when we get our records management, electronic records management up and running, that there's going to be significant cost savings in there. And you don't see those savings yet. We're still looking at our fleet operation and the right sizing in the fleet. In fact, we just have a new policy revision on the fleet that's coming out of the city manager's office. So we're still looking at things that you gave us direction to look at last October that haven't yet been vetted out completely or haven't been fully implemented. We're also looking at the leisure center, call center concept, to try to centralize some of that. While that may not necessarily, right away, result in some cost savings, it's certainly going to produce some efficiencies. And so flexibility, inability to reorganize and rethink how we provide services has been critical to us and has been a real key as to why we've been able to drop a lot of these positions over time. Let's talk a little bit about the revenue outlook, because that's probably the thing that we're probably most nervous about, after we pat our backs about how well we're managing our costs, the things that we can't manage that just happened to us is the revenue structure. And just to refresh, last October, we talked about what kind of a trigger were we going to put in place to when we would adjust the model? And we said that we would -- the financial services, the city would continue to look at the financial information, the revenue information every month, at some of those monthly reports you get that have been pretty upsetting as of late. We said we would report on a quarterly basis what those changes are happening, what they're causing in our financial condition, and that every six months, if a couple of conditions were met, we would go back and revise the model. And one of those conditions, or those two main conditions, were if the reduction in revenue exceeded 2% of the previous official model, if we hit that measure. And the other one was if the reduction in the revenue exceeded 50% of the money that we had set aside for the revenue stabilization fund. And obviously, when we hit the bottom and start recovering, as we start seeing our revenues grow, then corrective actions would no longer be necessary. So let's dive right into the problem. The problem is that bloody first line there, C-Tax. C-Tax is an acronym for consolidated tax. Again, it's about 84% of it, sales and use tax. Probably another 10% or less is government service tax, which is motor vehicle privilege or property tax, if you will. Also has some other minor taxes in it. And as you can see here, what we're looking at right now is about a 10% reduction from our budget estimate of $252, $252.1 million. We're now saying that that might come in at $225,000. That's a 10% reduction. Property tax is --
Let me ask you this, and I say this respectfully, really, because I know what kind of a rollercoaster we've been on. How could we have been so far off? Is this a situation that we've never confronted before and therefore weren't able to make a more accurate projection?
You know, I wish I had a really elegant answer for that. Just the example of December alone, December, the month of December, which is the last month we got, which is usually our biggest retail month of the year, I didn't expect it to go up, but I did not expect it to go down 17.5%. I mean, that was just phenomenal. I don't know how we would have predicted that. We had not ever hit anything close to that. And certainly, we flirted with the 10% number a few quarters and a few months, but never that far.
The reason I ask the question is because the predictions basically equate into the formula that you're using and the example that we use. And that's why when we went into this and started talking about a 1% reduction as far as slowing growth, it made a lot of sense. And now we're in a situation where the world is really very different.
Well, a couple of things I'll mention. We do intend to reconvene the Financial Oversight Committee. We felt it's a little -- we think it's prudent to -- I don't want to consume a lot of their time and go through a lot of iterations, but somewhere between the March 30 budget workshop and obviously before the May budget hearing, we intend to bring them back in to take a look at our projections. The odd thing about that is nationally --
No, that's the group that -- from the private sector.
Right.
Correct. They helped us last summer.
They helped us last time, and they --
I understand. That's why I'm saying, when I say "we," I'm talking about everybody appeared to misjudge this.
As a community, I don't -- I think if you had every city and county manager lined up here right now, or every finance director, I don't think any of them predicted what we've seen in the last quarter of '08. I don't even think the federal government anticipated what we saw in the last quarter of '08. So we're not in the boat alone. We may have missed the mark, but I think we missed the mark along with everybody else.
The good news about that, if there is a silver lining, is that we hedged our revenue estimate in the conservative way that we manage our costs. So I'm telling you that when you -- we will see a slide here shortly where we actually predicted that we were going to have a -- we filed a budget last May that predicted a $20 million operating shortfall. And now it looks today that we're going to come in with not an operating shortfall this year, not because revenue went up, but because we took prudent action on our expenditures. So, you know, if there's a silver lining, that's it. The only other comment I was going to make to you, Mayor, was that at the time we met last summer, the underlying fundamentals in a lot of the economy, savings rates, the capitalization rates of banks, actually were healthy. And people were thinking that this was more of a psychological blip in terms of the spending issue. Certainly, the credit issue with the mortgage, it was nothing psychological. That was a real problem and still remains a problem today. But the psychology of the spending, the psychology of the cutbacks, some things feed upon themselves sometimes. And we didn't see that coming. Everything that we were hearing was that, you know, it might be a year, two-year recession. Now it looks like it's two, maybe three years. So it's a different -- it's a different situation.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
You show the property tax as level, but when do we see the kick?
Next year.
Next year?
You're going to see that in the slide coming up.
Okay.
The kick in the pants.
Huh? Kick in the pants. Exactly.
Mayor Goodman?
Yes.
Mark, you mentioned 17%. What were you referencing, the 17%?
The December's actual tax distribution to us was 17.5% this past December than it was the previous December.
So overall, as far as when you last reported, what was the projection that you reported? And understanding that this is the reality?
Yeah, I think in October, if my memory serves me right, we're looking at like a 4% reduction for, 4.5% reduction in consolidated tax for 2009. We're at 9% lower through the first six months. We're now projecting that we'll be under almost 11%, 10.5% to 11% by the end of the year. So, and please don't -- please don't ask me if that's a -- what's the phrase, done deal?
Slam dunk. Slam dunk would be the word.
Yeah, slam dunk is what we're advised by our staff.
My favorite city attorney's not listening to me. This slide, I apologize for viewers, this is not going to be readable on paper, and maybe on your screens, it might be a little more readable. But there's a couple of things I want to point out here. The first budget column, original '09 budget, that's the 2009 budget as we filed. The new '09 is the numbers that we're talking about today, based upon new revenue forecasts and based upon the cost projections that we've had, taking into consideration all the vacancies, the VSPs, and so on and so forth. And you'll see, if your eye goes down almost to the bottom of the page, there's an excess shortfall row there. And you'll see in 2009, the original 2009, we were predicting a $20 million shortfall. Now we're predicting maybe a positive flow of about $5 million. That's not because revenue went up. Revenue went down from $537.3 million to $514.5 million. That's almost a $18, $19 million reduction. The real savings was on the expenditures. We had budgeted $557.4 million in expenditures. We're now going to come in at $509. That is the -- that's a $49 million reduction. That correlates to the slides I previously showed you about some of the reductions. So we have been really tightening our belt. We've been strategically looking at how we provide services. The FSR review helped us look at that and make some decisions about where we want to deploy or redeploy people. So we, even though we missed the target on the revenue side, we're actually better off financially, as we sit here today, than we thought we were because of the 318-plus positions that we have vacant.
And I might just mention, sustaining that, as Mark indicated, is going to be very difficult.
Right. Right, and that brings me to the rest of the columns on this. As you can see, that we originally thought we'd have about a 2% growth in 2009 revenues, on the revenue growth line, about maybe a third or a fourth down the page. Now we're predicting a 2.3 negative growth in 2009. In 2010, we're predicting a 4% drop in our property tax revenue. And this goes to Councilman Steinman's question. We'll come in right around $133.5 million in revenue this year for property tax. We expect next year that to be around $128.2. That's a 4% reduction. We're also assuming another 2% reduction in consolidated tax for fiscal year 10, from $225,000 to $220.5 million. So we're still predicting -- we're still in a recession. We clearly believe we're going to be in a recession, I believe we're going to be in a recession all through fiscal year 2010, and maybe for part of 2011, if not all 2011. I'm hopeful that somewhere around the end of 2000, somewhere around the end of calendar 2010, we might start to feel ourselves pull up, but --
On the property tax, can I ask you?
Yes, sir.
To substantiate why you only have a 4% drop, and it may be the way we assess in this county and so on, but it seems to me that it's going to be, it could be greater than that with what we've seen when that catch-up occurs in assessments. And we know we're always a year behind. And if we've seen property values drop in the neighborhood of 30% to 50%, whatever it is, how do we only keep this from dropping 4%?
Well, this is based upon the January assessment from the Clark County Assessor. It does not have in it, well, I shouldn't say it doesn't have in it, it has a factor in it for the appeals. But we, I don't know that we know what the appeals results are just yet.
And they were greater than expected, I read, the appeals.
There were a significant increase in the number of appeals. The actual dollar amount of those may be another question. But the raw data we got from the assessor predicted about a 3.5% reduction in our -- in Las Vegas property tax. We're increasing that to about 4% reduction. So again, this is, we haven't had the workshop yet. Something may change between now and March, and something may change between March and May, but right now, this is the best guess that I have for it.
The mayor asked you earlier about how did you miss the mark, but I want to commend you because what you did on the expense side is incredible. It's almost like you had the crystal ball that this was going to happen, and it really saved you when it comes down to it. And you started that over a year ago, and a lot of this wasn't appearing on the horizon a year ago. So you're to be commended for what you did there.
Well, I can't take that credit because the reality is there wasn't a finance director in the Valley that didn't see this coming. The difference is, we have a management team and a board that's willing to listen to the truth and not be Pollyanna about something that's coming down the street. And I don't mean to say that disrespectfully to any of you, but I -- we work in a very open environment in the city, and when staff sees something coming, and we talk about it, and we have a voice, we share it with you, we make better decisions, and I think that's --
But my point is, you didn't see 17% drop coming.
No, I didn't see that coming.
You didn't see that at all.
We've been very conservative in the way we've approached things for the last 12 months because, quite frankly, you know, everybody keeps talking about where's the bottom. I'm not sure anybody knows where the bottom is yet. And so as long as it's not clear to us that we're near the bottom, we're going to continue to be as conservative as we can be.
I agree. Thank you.
Just a couple of other points to speak to Betsy's comment. If you come all the way down to the second, the bottom line down there, where it says fund balance, you'll see that our fund balance is now going up from the predicted $76.6 to the new $102.2 million. That, if we do nothing else, that gets consumed over the next two years, 10 and 11. Remember that we also have identified the $47 million in revenue stabilization fund. That's not factored in here either. And so between now and March, to the budget workshop, we're going to be working with some of this to kind of come up with some recommendations about what we may think we should do with that fund balance, what we should do with the revenue stabilization fund. The good news here, again, if there's any good news in this, is that we have bought some more time. We can make, when you have time to think and plan things out, you can make a better decision. And that's really what we're trying to do here. We're trying to give you as much time as possible to make good, sound decisions about what we need to do to get through the remaining year or two of recession, or even longer. And we've done that. So I don't feel a sense of urgency to do anything drastic more than what we've already done for '09, or even perhaps for the start of '10. But we'll be talking about that at the budget workshop, and I'm sure you can give us a lot more direction when we get there. But that's the important thing. We can't sustain where we're at. And just pictorially, you've seen this graph before. This is the graphic representation, the previous slide, where the green bar represents the fund balance in millions of dollars. On the left scale, and the red line represents the number of weeks' coverage that the fund balance represents. And as I've told you before, just like any business, just like any person, everybody needs to have some cash in the bank as an operating fund, if you will. And 10% represents about 5.2 weeks of operations, which means if something were to happen and we didn't collect any new revenues for about five weeks, we would have some difficulty paying our existing bills, like payroll and accounts payable, for example. And so this is just a chart that graphically predicts that while we may be fine in '10, '11, you can see we dropped well below the 10% of 52 weeks, which is the dashed blue line, and then by '12, we have a big problem. So we have time, again -- is the dashed blue line. And then by 12, we have a big problem. So we have time, again, to react. But I don't see anything really hopeful in the next two years on the revenue side. So we're going to have to deal with this all through the expenditure side.
Just, just by way of comment, we had a brief discussion about this yesterday in one of the briefings, is that we basically, through all of our efforts this year, bought us a year. That's, and looking forward, we're looking at exactly where we were a year and a half ago, when you all told us, go out there and come up with some game plan to steady the ship. And we're in that same boat again today. And what, that's what we will need to be doing in preparation for your March 30th workshop, the final conclusion of the budget approval in May, is to really lay out that game plan for next year. Because in a sense, through all of these efforts, and you know what a heavy lift it's been the last 18 months to get to this place, that we're about to have to do that same level of work and effort over the course of the next year to prepare for these next two years out. So it's, we're just going to have to continue to work as hard as we've been working, and be creative and innovative, and try and do our very best. Because we don't have control over the revenue side. There's no way we can print the money.
To put that just another way, I just thought of a way to illustrate, if you look at the green bar, this is the new FY '09, it shows 100 million. Had we not saved the $48 million out of our operating costs this past year, that bar would be down around $60 million. And all the subsequent bars, because this is a cumulative balance, all the subsequent bars to the right would all go down, $47 million. And so you'd have an immediate problem in FY 10. And we'd be talking about doing something much more drastic for next year's budget when we meet at the workshop. Again, we, we bought some time.
Mayor Goodman?
Councilor Barlow.
Mr. Vincent, if you, if you will, just go back again and, and repeat what you stated as far as the green bar. I'm, I'm trying to follow you here.
The, the bar in the exact middle that says new FY '09 at the bottom of it, that's our current estimate. It shows 100 million dollar fund balance. That's because we're going to underrun our expenditures by $48 million. Had we not underrun our expenditures, the $48 million had been spent, all that we had budgeted to spend, that bar would drop down to $60 million. It would go from 100 to 60, actually go a little less than 60. And then all the bars to the right of it, for 10, 11, 12, they would all equally drop the same amount. So what that would mean is FY 10 would go from having a projected fund balance of 73 million, or about 14%. It's, it would go down to close to 30 million or less. And we'd be talking a different tune right now about what our 10 budgets are going to look like. So again, the savings that we did bought us another year of time, which is a good thing. It's a good thing. It gives us another year to see what the economy does. It gives us another year to plan intelligently about how we're going to address it if it doesn't, doesn't rebound. Okay. Let me just conclude by saying that when we come back in March, we'll have a few things that we'll be talking about. I mentioned that we're filling back some of the critical vacant positions. I mentioned there were 88. I think there's some areas that need to be restaffed in, in certain areas. And certainly, we've had some discussions with all of you about those. There may be some additional labor considerations we need to talk about. Certainly, we'll be in negotiations with the IAFF. Metro will be in negotiations with the PPA. One of the things that Betsy talked about earlier is we're, one of the things we've been really successful in, because our employees are so well at adapting, is we have been able to be flexible. And one of the things we're going to be looking for is we want to be able to maintain that flexibility when you're downsizing your resources and trying to maintain as close as possible, the same levels of service. We're going to have to be flexible with how we use folks. So that'll be an issue that we, we might also be looking at. Targeted program reductions, I mentioned, there still are many items in the Fundamental Service Review that we haven't completely vetted out. There are projects that are underway right now that haven't actually produced the, the savings yet, but they will. And so those are continuing to go along. And we may have combinations of all those things. So on, on March 30th, we'll have a little more detailed presentation for you with some more specifics about what our recommendations are. And hopefully, don't have more bad news about missing the mark on the revenue side.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments or questions at this time? May I have a motion, please?
Please accept the report. Thank Mark, Betsy.
Let's go, please. Motion carries. Thank you. What are we up to, Ms. Bridges?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven. All right. It looks like our one o'clock calendar isn't going to go at one o'clock. So if anybody's here from the one o'clock calendar, I would suggest to come back about 2:30. I think that's probably realistic. Don't want to hold people around here. Item 57 is discussion and possible action regarding temporary approval of a new massage establishment license for Todd L. Schlesner, DC PC, doing business as Living Well Chiropractic Center at 10300 West Charleston Boulevard in Suite 10. This is in Ward 2. And this is an ancillary license to Living Well Chiropractic Center.
Mayor, council members, Carol Meyer, Finance and Business Services. Dr. Schlesner has met our criteria for consideration of temporary approval of this massage establishment license. And again, like the mayor said, this is an ancillary license. And my recommendation would be approval of this license subject to all conditions. And I would like to read into the record the conditions that we place on these type of massage establishments. The first condition is that all massage therapists must be licensed with the state of Nevada, as well as the city of Las Vegas, that they cannot have any exterior signage advertising massage. The massage rooms is not to exceed 150 square feet, and the hours of operation must be the same as the main business. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Schlesner to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Dr. Schlesner, do you understand the conditions?
Yes, I do.
Are you ready to abide by those?
Absolutely.
All right. Would you like to be heard at this time?
I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
All right, very good. Councilperson.
Thank you. Doctor, it seems that more and more, we're seeing doctors like yourself, chiropractors, that want to come before us because of a need to enhance the services you offer to your customers, correct?
Absolutely. More services. Absolutely.
You perform chiropractic services, but you're finding that some of your patients would benefit also from a massage, from a licensed massage therapist.
Absolutely. I've been in practice for 11 years, and I've worked with many massage therapists over the years. Actually, I was approached by some massage therapists who are licensed in the city that actually want jobs because they're being displaced to other places. And they asked that I go before the council, and basically asked to get my facility licensed so that therefore they would have jobs. So actually, I'm adding some jobs by doing this, too.
Good. We're talking about one room, one massage therapist at a time?
Yeah.
Or two or three. So, okay. My motion is for approval.
All right, let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Mayor Goodman?
Yes.
I have a question in regards, an administrative question. In the event anyone comes before us with a temporary license, and their background is not up to par, what happens to that license? Is it the director who, which denies them, or does that application come before the council for?
That's a very good question. What we, what we would do is, depending on how bad the background was, we could suspend the temporary license and bring them back to the very next available meeting. Or if it's not that the background isn't sufficient where we think that we need to immediately suspend them, we would just bring them back to the next available council meeting. And you would have a copy of the report with area of concern.
So it would be the director or the department that will make the determination as to whether or not an applicant will move forward for full approval, or come back before the council for a recommendation?
Anything that, if the, the way it's agended, if there's no areas of concern in his background investigation, the director has the ability to approve his permanent license. If his background came back with any areas of concern, we would bring it back for counsel consideration.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, doctor.
Thank you.
All right. Item 58 is discussion and possible action regarding a change of location for a temporary psychic arts and science license for April Stevens, doing business as Vegas Psychic, from 5000 West Oakley Boulevard, Suite A 3 to 4, to 2217 Paradise Road, Suite A. This is in Ward 3.
Mayor, members of council, Carol Meyer, Finance and Business Services. Ms. Stevens currently has a temporary license. She, with her change of location, it requires council approval. So what she's here today is to get approval of her change of location on her temporary license. Again, her temporary license has conditions placed upon her license, and I would like to read those into the record, just so we're clear that these conditions still stay with her as she moves. Condition number one would be rates must be posted in a conspicuous place, visible to patrons, on a sign of at least eight by 10 inches, in size with lettering no smaller than one inch. Number two, if the licensee operates by donation or indirect method of payment, including remuneration, that is at the discretion of the customer, the signage shall indicate such to the patron. The rates published shall be the only rates charged. And with those conditions on her temporary license, my recommendation would be approval of this change of location.
And, oh, you're, you're Ms. Stevens, correct?
Yes.
Do you understand those conditions?
Yes, I do.
Do you agree with them?
Yes, I do.
Do you have that opinion as to who's going to win the final four?
I do.
You don't? What sport do you have psychic powers on?
Excuse me?
What sport do you have psychic powers on?
Football. I went through this with you last time.
I know you did, and you were wrong.
And we won.
Oh, we did. You were right.
Yeah.
I went against you.
Aw.
Okay. Will you come back next football season?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay. Mayor Prota?
I'm Lou Francis, National Commission.
Okay, let's vote, please. Post.
Let's just take a voice vote for this one, please.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
All right, motion carries. If I come by, where do I go, on the Paradise?
Sahara and Paradise.
Sahara and Paradise. If I come by, will you give me the straight scoop?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good luck.
Just try anything.
Don't try anything to win a bet. Item number 60, discussion and possible action regarding a review of a temporary locksmith license. 360 Locksmith LLC, doing business as 360 Lock and Key at 9557 Gibbon Avenue. And this is in Ward 6. Judy Fury.
Mayor, members of the council, today we're here on the final temporary license of the 360 locksmith. As you have in your backup, you have a report from the Metropolitan Police Department, and Investigator Laura Anderson is here to be able to answer any questions you have on her investigative report. Some of the concerns that we have with regard to going forward for a consideration of a permanent license are outlined in the report. And they're pretty much the same as another application that we heard about a month, month and a half ago. It, I don't know if this is a trend in the locksmith industry, but we seem to have a situation where we're having individuals coming forward for locksmith licenses that are placing addresses in the telephone, telephone book, and also on the website, where they're physically not located there and not licensed to do business from that location. That's the primary concern that we have with this particular application. The other one that is, is pretty alarming is the application contained a business known as SafeKey, which Mr. Bankle had listed on his application, that he had been conducting business from October of 2005 at this same location of 9557 Gibbon Avenue. We don't have a business license or a locksmith license issued under that particular name. Now, I did meet with Mr. Bankle last week, and he had a copy of his report, and went over the report in detail with him. He provided me with some evidence that he has made some changes to the website, where he's corrected the address, which were, which were on the websites, and has made changes to those where it will reflect the 9557 Gibbon Avenue. When I asked him about SafeKey, he said he was merely an employee of that particular business. I did find, in going through the Secretary of State's records this morning, that on SafeKey, Inc., it does, it does list Mr. Bankle as the resident agent, and it does list him as president, treasurer, and director. And, and his secretary would be, I believe, his wife of Tanika Bankle. That has been registered since November of 2005. So we have some inconsistencies with how he practices his business and what he represents to our office, as well as the Metropolitan Police Department, in how he would conduct business, or, or the nature of his businesses in the past. Investigator Anderson has, has actually done some research on the website, and does have additional information, if you are interested in that today. But having said this, I cannot support recommending approval of a permanent license on this particular application.
What is your recommendation?
It would be denial of the permanent license.
All right. You can identify yourselves.
I'm Attorney Barry Levinson at 2810 South Rainbow Boulevard. I would like to discuss some of the inconsistencies that they found. Like, I went on yahoo.com instead of Google, and I found actually his address. When he actually applied for his particular license, he put his home, his home address down, is that's where he's doing business. And he actually asked for a, I guess it's a, a place, he asked permission to do business from his home. And furthermore, when I took a look at the fictitious firm name that he, he applied for with the county, okay, that was done in two, four of 2008, almost a year ago, okay. He actually listed his, his business license as being 9557 Gibbon Avenue, which is his home address. He was not intentionally trying to deceive anybody. And if anybody wanted to look up his address, they could take a look at, it was on the county website for everyone to see. Matter of fact, I'll give you a copy of it to take a look at. As a matter of fact, when I went to Google Maps to, to look at 360 Lock and Key, it came up that his address was his home address. So maybe, I don't know if in the past it was there, but as of just the other day, it wasn't. And I don't know if they checked on Google, I mean, or Yahoo. There's many different search engines, okay. I know Google being the, the main search engine. Well, when we took a look at it, it was his home address, okay. In the phone book, it doesn't list any other address, except, it doesn't list actually any address in any of the phone books. But some of the things they were looking at, Magic Book and Yellow Book, I mean, I've seen all kinds of, you know, discrepancies when it comes to that. But I mean, if he was trying to deceive anybody, he wouldn't have put it on his application, and he wouldn't have filed a fictitious firm name for 360 Lock and Key with his corporation. I mean, that's what he did. It's, I mean, you can look it up right now. And furthermore, what I'd like to discuss is the fact of, he was actually working with another locksmith in, since 2005, but he formed a corporation. But he wasn't, he was, he wasn't, he was, he was, he was an employee under this person, but he was doing it for tax reasons. He wasn't doing it to go out and do, do side jobs or anything else like that. He never did. And as of last night, he just got his license approved in Henderson. So if you have any questions for him, he'd be more than hap, yeah, he'd be more than happy to, yes.
SafeKey never...
Please identify yourself.
My name is Ronan Bankle. I'm the owner. I'm sorry that I'm a little bit exciting, that I'm going to lose my job. SafeKey never provide a direct service for a customer. It was through a licensed company here in town. SafeKey built only for a tax benefit that my contractor suggested to me to build. I never published SafeKey. I never advertised it. I never wore, have a uniform of SafeKey. My car never marked as a SafeKey. SafeKey was only on a paper. That's it. I never provide the service for a direct customer. I don't know if you take a look on the investigation, take a look on the internet to find the SafeKey, something, nothing, because it's only on the paper. It's only for a tax benefit. This is for SafeKey. About the listing that they filed on the internet, I'm sorry about that. I take a full responsibility for that. My manager put a listing, a full listing, that it was wrong. He put a wrong address. I didn't know that. I didn't approve that. But I take a full responsibility for that. And I'm sorry about that. And I fix it. The moment that I know about it, I fix it immediately. I'm not easy mind on, on my business. This business is provide three family food on the table, okay. I, I serve over 600 customers this year with my temporary license. I never have it complained. I never broke any law. I'm, I'm trying to do an honest business. So I'm sorry if she find a wrong listing on the internet, that I didn't know that. But I know that, the moment that I know that, I fix that. So I appreciate it.
What I, what I'd like to note, like I said, if he was trying to hide something, he wouldn't have put his, over a year ago, when he was applying for all this stuff, he wouldn't have put his home address on, on the fictitious firm name. He just wouldn't have. And it, you know, and if, and if this would make, if this would make them happy, he'd be more than happy to have a temporary license with a review in like six months if you guys have a problem with it.
Please.
Mayor, we're at the end of the second temporary license. And by code, the city council has to take action on the permanent license today. council has to take action on the permanent license today. We cannot recommend or even go forward with an extension of the temporary license.
Mayor Gibbon?
Yes, Councilman.
I have a question for Mr. Difiori. What is the reason why, that we're here for the second? Why wasn't he approved the first six-month temporary review?
He was approved for the first six-month temporary review. We extended that temporary license administratively while the investigation was ongoing. Your investigative report is dated February 11th, and this is the first available meeting for us to hear this.
Mayor Gibbon?
Yes.
If we were to grant him a permanent license, and then there were problems in the future, we could always bring a revocation action, is that right?
That's correct.
Secondly, have we had any complaints from any customers or people out in the community about his business practices?
No, we have not.
And he's been practicing the locksmith business in the community, I say it that way, for how long?
For about a year now. Today is the one-year period of his operation within the Las Vegas community.
Now, the investigation completed, is that right?
That's correct.
It has been completed, and other than what you put in your report, there's no other areas of concern? He doesn't have a bad criminal background or arrest history or anything like that?
No, he does not.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? Mike Casper Ross?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Bankel, Mr. Levinson.
Yes.
Let me read this. This is the conclusion of Laura Anderson investigative specialist's report that has me mostly concerned. Mr. Bankel has demonstrated from past and present business practices, he has not complied with licensing requirements of the City of Las Vegas. When afforded the opportunity to clear his past, Mr. Bankel blamed an unidentified city employee for not obtaining a license. When challenged about the fictitious addresses, Mr. Bankel blamed it on his office manager. That's not what you're doing today.
No, he's admitting that it was office manager, but he's taking full responsibility that it was his office manager, because essentially, he's running the business. So whoever's doing whatever he's doing, he has to take full responsibility.
So, I'm not gonna get in an argument with you, Mr. Levinson.
Yeah.
I am gonna say this, however. Mr. Bankel, when he filled out his paperwork initially to do business in the City of Las Vegas, and we encourage businesses to come to the City of Las Vegas, we want them to come here, we want them to be successful when they do business with us. This just doesn't smell right. If Mr. Bankel claimed responsibility, why did he do this the first time? If Mr. Bankel wanted to be a business owner in the City of Las Vegas, he should have followed through for this privileged license like the city requires every other business to do. I'm thrilled to death that he got his license in the City of Henderson, that's awesome. But in the City of Las Vegas, I can't support it. Your Honor, I move to follow staff's recommendation.
All right, let's vote, please. Post.
It's unanimous.
All right, motion carries.
How can you see that?
Okay. Mr. Levinson, Mr. Bankel, the motion carry.
All right.
All right.
That was Master Beverly. You showed a unanimous.
The Council of the Districts.
I believe.
All right, the record should reflect that there.
I thought I heard you say.
You said unanimous. All right, item 62.
Let's get some help. I'll get her.
We all right here?
Yeah.
All right, item 62 is discussion of possible action regarding an appeal of non-renewal of a tanning salon license for Hawaiian Relax Tanning and Spa at 3053 South Valley View Boulevard. Ho Van Lee, the owner, this is in Ward 1. Let me, before we start this, folks, there are folks out there, does anybody have another matter before us, because this could take some time? And I could call your matter out of order if it would be convenient to you? All right, I assume it's for other matters, then, that's fine. All right, Mr. Jerbik?
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council.
Identify themselves for the record, please.
This is Brad Jerbik, speaking in the mayhem of the city attorney's office representing the City of Las Vegas.
Mr. Terry.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman. William Terry appearing with Mr. Lee and Lina Novell Markey.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Jerbik?
The procedure before we begin, let you know that I may be calling to as many three witnesses. One of the witnesses is an undercover detective. Before I do that, I will tell the, this body that I'm calling undercover detective, it's my understanding that the cameras will then go just to the council. They will not go to the witnesses, like the camera's probably on me right now as I'm talking. So, for the public at home, that's why we're doing it, it's an undercover officer, we don't want to compromise his identity, but it will provide a full opportunity for Mr. Terry and his client to examine him and do whatever they need to do.
Fine, and I think that the folks should be advised that this, as far as the allegations are concerned, and the backup material that we have, it's pretty graphic, and as a result, those folks who may be offended by graphic depictions of allegations concerning sexual matters, they might want to temper their, they're watching it based on that.
That was my next point, Your Honor, is that we are gonna get into some fairly graphic testimony. There's some allegations, as you can read in the backup material, of illegal activity, including prostitution, that obviously can be disputed by Mr. Terry, but nevertheless, we're gonna get into that kind of testimony, and that testimony will be sometimes graphic, so.
Okay, let me ask you this, how long do you think this will last?
I expect that to get through all this material, I can probably do it in about half an hour, Your Honor, at the least.
How about you, Mr. Terry?
I'd say about 45 minutes.
All right, the reason I'm asking the question, we started at 8:00 this morning and really didn't have a break, and what's your schedule like? If we took half an hour without-
It's not good this afternoon. Can I raise one question with the council? We recognize that we received a notice in this situation, but we also want to make it clear that in September of '07, there was an original declination to renew this business license, which we appealed from. And we appeared before you in November of 2007, and the city withdrew their opposition. And I think we can cut this down a little, if the council agrees that, really what we're dealing with is a period of time from November of 2007 to the current time, not going backwards. Because had that been the issue, we should have addressed it in November of '07 when we were first before the council.
Were all of the matters which pertain to that period of time known to the council at the time that we took that action?
Absolutely, because that was in the city's notice and the objection. Now, obviously, as a result of the notice that we've received here, from August of 2008, there are additional allegations.
Right, I understand that. All right, well, I'll ask the city attorney for guidance on this one.
Let me speak, and I'll have Mr. Redline speak as well. Abdicating for the city, we intend to introduce all the evidence that was in the letter that was given to Mr. Lee. That would include that evidence that preceded that original letter. Let me let you know procedurally what happened. Back in 2007-
Well, what I'm trying to do is-
I know.
I'm trying to ascertain whether or not the clerk needs a little bit of a break here, whether the manager's office needs a little bit of a break, whether the council could use a little break, and what's your next court appearance or office?
We have a telephone conference at 1:00, which we can probably put off till 1:30, but not much more than that.
Unfortunately, it's a hearing up in Carson City that I'm teleconferencing in, so I have to be available at 1:00.
And would you be able to use a phone in this building to do it, or do you have to be through?
Unfortunately, I had to give the agency in Carson City 30 days' notice of the telephone number I would be available at. So I have all of the documents for that, and my client as well.
How long will the telephonic conversation take?
They've given us a window of 1:00 to 5:00 PM.
Oh, it could be that long.
Unfortunately, it's a little bit more detailed than even the hearing.
All right, then what we're doing, we'll proceed. We'll proceed with the hearing now.
If I could, Your Honor, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Mrs. Markey will do the, any examination and make further arguments. We can just exchange places.
Fine.
I think you need to resolve the similar question that Mr. Terry raised, as to what kind of evidence are you gonna consider today? And we have the city, let me state that, I think the applicant's license expired about 30 days before the city decided to non-renew. His license became due, he mailed in a check, I might be off by a couple of days here or there, but he mailed in a check, then the decision was to return the check and non-renew. And then the applicant appealed from that non-renewal. We advised our client that it was basically too late to un-renew and mail them back the check, and that's why we didn't proceed at that time. Now, we're up for another renewal period, this time it was caught before the check was cashed, before the renewal period, the letter was sent, and it includes everything. And so our position is that all the evidence of his conduct from the day he's owned this license and operated this business ought to be considered. Mr. Redline's your board counsel on this, Mr. Terry's free to make his argument as well.
Mr. Redline, do you have an opinion?
I do, and I don't mean to be equivocal, but I would venture to suggest that if Mr. Difiori possessed only information about the misconduct in the year 2007, which preceded the issuance of this license last time, he knows that that's fallen by the wayside with your decision to ignore it and the issuance of the license in late 2007. I don't think that he would ever suggest that misbehavior in 2007 would have been grounds for dismissal, or that it would have been grounds for a declination to renew this license in the month of February 2008. But it is the same kind of misconduct that he has recorded, given notice to the appellant of, and lodged with you, that has occurred in the summer, in the fall, in the winter of 2008. It lends meaning to the subsequent misconduct. It should not be regarded independently as grounds for the action that he has recently taken. So, you know, I have mixed view about its admissibility. It has utility, it gives meaning to the new misbehavior but by itself. I don't think he would hear Mr. Difiori suggest that it's grounds for him to have not renewed in the month of February.
Well, in abundance of course, and then I'm going to say that we'll only consider events subsequent to the licensing. That will certainly limit the scope of presentation.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I might, you might want to keep in mind something that I'm sure you've been exposed to in court before. Your view might change if there is testimony offered by the appellant.
Oh, absolutely, I mean, if they open the door, then it's a whole different ballgame. I haven't forgotten those rules, even though I haven't invoked them in the last 10 years.
So, Mayor? Mayor?
Yes.
Before Mr. Jerbik goes into his deliberation of this item, Brad, are you going to outline those things, or will we be notified of those things that we're only to take into consideration of this item?
Here's what I plan to do.
Being that I've read the entire backup, I'll at least know what parameters. I should only judge my comment.
Here's what I plan to do, you've all been provided with the same materials Mr. Terry has been provided with, that contains all the evidence. I'm not gonna talk about anything that the mayor has just ruled on, I'm gonna only talk about those things which came after the withdrawal of the non-renewal in 2007. I'm going to seek to make a record that we certainly served the licensee with notice of the non-renewal in a timely manner, and that he filed his notice of appeal in a timely manner. That notice that puts him, that lets him know that he's gonna be non-renewed, contains a list of everything that Mr. Difiori relied on, including those things that the mayor has just said he would not allow us to introduce in our case in chief, so to speak. To the extent that it's not evidence, but just evidence of proper notice, I would either seek a stipulation from council or introduce this just for the purpose of showing that we mailed the letter on time. We'll go either way with that.
Let us address that. The letter is at page 376 of the documents which you have. And if you notice that letter, it is limited to the notice. In other words, we're willing to comply with, one, Your Honor's ruling already, and, two, that there is an issue as to anything that is set forth within that letter. But we also take the position that if the city tries to evidence anything that is not in that notice, it should not be admitted. In other words, that's the notice we appealed from.
And that's exhibit 19.
Exhibit 19?
Page 376.
376.
Yeah, you have tabs, and Mr. Terry has pages, I think, so we'll go by tabs if that's convenient for the council, I think it makes it easier for everyone to follow.
But it's tab 19.
Well, basically, when were they, before us, before Mr. Jerbik?
The last hearing was November 21st, 2007.
Of what year? Okay, so there's plenty here from August 12th, 2008.
There is some, again, I would argue that it was never reached on the merits, the city never put on a hearing. If we had put on a hearing, I would probably stand up here and say, we're not gonna go back and rehash the same things twice, but again-
Well, I may very well allow you to put on the prior acts, depending on what the defendant does during their case.
We'll go with your ruling right now, and we'll go on just with the acts that are not prior. What I would like to do is introduce for the limited purpose of showing you that notice was given to the applicant before his license was due for renewal, I believe on March 1st, a letter sent to him by Mr. Difiori. It does contain other acts in there, but again, I'm not gonna go into them.
Right, that's fine.
And if I could file that with the court?
All right, that's made part of the record.
No, thank you, make that part of the record. I would also like to make another letter part of the record, it's dated February 24th, 2009, and that sets the hearing date for Wednesday, March 4th, that is today, at 9:00 AM.
Any objections to that?
Well, again, we're relying upon the letter of February 6th, 2009, and we acknowledge we received the notice. Mr. Jerbik, and I apologize, what was the date of the other letter?
I'm sorry, it's dated February 24th, 2009.
It's just setting today as the date.
Which would have been after the appeal time.
But it just said that the-
Hearing date.
Yes, we'll still hear it.
With that, I'd like to call Mr. Difiori.
Okay.
Could you please state your name? My name is Jim Difiori, I'm the manager of the Business Services Division for the City of Las Vegas. How long have you been that manager, the manager of the Business Services Division? 20 years. During your time managing that division, are you familiar with the various types of licenses the City of Las Vegas issues for businesses in the city? Yes, I am. October 2nd, 2006, did you have occasion to issue a license for a tanning salon to Mr. Ho Van Lee? Yes. Is Mr. Lee here today? Yes, he is. Is he the individual standing next to Mr. Terry? Yes, he is. The, what type of license under the city's licensing code did Mr. Lee receive for his business? It's a license known as a tanning salon license. What does that license allow Mr. Lee to do? Operate a tanning salon in a general fashion. Does that license allow for massage? No, it does not. Does, was that included in Mr. Lee's application at the time that he received his tanning license? Yes, it was. His description was, in the description field, no massage. If I could turn the council's attention to exhibit number one. Mr. Difiori, I'm showing you some documents behind what has been marked or pinned to the council as tab number one in a three-ring binder of exhibits. Do you recognize these documents I'm showing you? Yes, I do. Is that the license application that was applied for and given eventually to Mr. Lee? Yes, it was. On this application, turning to, here in the first page of the application, does there appear to be writing on there that indicates what the license is limited to? Yes, it does. What does it say the license is limited to? It would be limited to a tanning spa. He has no massage, no beauty, food, or tanning to be sold. If Mr. Lee were to allow massage activity on the premises, would he require a separate license for that? Yes, he would. If he were to allow massage activity on the premises given this license, would he be in violation of the Las Vegas Municipal Code, in your opinion? Yes, he would. Is that a code that you have responsibility for administering and policing? Yes, it is. Turning your attention to Las Vegas Municipal Code 6.02090, did you have occasion to review the license for Mr. Lee at Hawaiian Relax and Tanning to determine whether or not it should be renewed earlier this year? Yes, I did. Did you make a determination whether or not Mr. Lee's license should be renewed? Yes, I did. And what was your determination? My determination was, it violated the code and that we had grounds to non-renew it for a March 1st renewal date. Let me show you a document which I've already filed with the clerk. This is a letter dated February 6th, 2009. Are you the author of that letter? Yes, I am. Is that a letter that you sent to Mr. Lee notifying that his license would not be Is that a letter that you sent to Mr. Lee notifying that his license would not be renewed?
Yes, it is.
Does that letter contain a number of incidents that you relied on in making the determination not to renew Mr. Lee's license?
Yes, it does.
Mr. DiFiore, I'll represent to you that the counsel has determined that activity prior to August 12th, 2008 is not to be considered at this time, nor will I introduce any evidence that would support those allegations. So I'm going to ask you to look at those things which are contained in your letter that begin on August 12th, 2008. When I say those things, those incidents that you brought to Mr. Lee's attention as part of the basis for the nonrenewal, and ask you if those incidents that occurred between August 12th, 2008, and the last incident, which I believe was your finding an ad in City Life Magazine on January 29th, 2009, if those incidents, considered alone, without anything before, would you have still made the decision to revoke Mr. Lee's license?
Yes, I would.
By the way, just for historical background, are you familiar with this location prior to Mr. Lee having the business license in it?
Yes, I am.
What was this location known as before?
It was known as VIP Massage.
Did they receive a massage license from the city in 2003?
Yes, they did.
And that would have permitted legal massage in the premises?
Yes, it would.
The, did there come a time when VIP closed their doors?
Yes, they did.
Did there come a time when you made a recommendation to this counsel that the license for VIP massage should be revoked?
Yes, I did.
Do you remember when that was?
I believe it was in the fall of 2007.
And for the record, what was the basis of your recommendation for revocation of VIP massage's license?
Let me correct myself. I believe it was in the fall of 2006, and my recommendation was for the counsel to revoke the massage establishment license for VIP massage.
And did the counsel follow that recommendation?
Yes, they did.
Was it approximately two months later then that Mr. Hovan Lee came to you, came to your department in October of 2006, asking for this license?
Approximately two months, that's correct.
Turning your attention to tab number 10. This is tab number 10 in your books. Do those documents appear to be arrest reports pertaining to an incident at VIP Massage on August 12th, 2008?
Yes, they do.
Is that the incident that you referenced in your letter of February 6th, 2009?
Yes, it is.
With the counsel's indulgence, I would like to read into the record what I think are relevant parts of that report.
Go ahead.
I am turning now to what will be the back of the page. It says exhibit 10. It's kind of a pinkish-colored page. At the top of it, it says arrest report, and the name is Melanie Kang at the top of the arrest report. I'm going to read in relevant part, starting with the second paragraph. "On August 12th, 2008, at approximately 2,100 hours, I walked into the Hawaii Relax Tanning and Spa located at 2053 South Valley View Boulevard." When I say "I," we're talking about a detective with the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. "I was in plain clothes and acting in an undercover capacity. I was being monitored and surveilled by Sergeant V. Vigna with his P. number, Sergeant or Detective Gentry with his P. number, Detective Beas with his P. number, Detective Hardwick in a P. number, and Detective Bowman in a P. number. What's inside the business? I was greeted by an Asian female at the front counter. I told the Asian female I was looking for a massage, and she told me it would cost me $60 for 45 minutes of massage. I agreed to pay the Asian female the $60 for 45 minutes. The Asian female then escorted me to a back room and told me to sit down on the table, and she would send a girl right in to take care of me. Approximately five minutes later, an Asian female adult dressed in a small red lingerie top and bottom entered my room. The Asian female asked me for $60, and I handed her a $100 bill. The Asian female then left the room and returned approximately two minutes later with $40 in change. She gave me my change and told me to take my clothes off. She then left the room while I disrobed and returned approximately two minutes later. Once the Asian female had returned, she told me to lie face down on the massage table. She then covered her hands with lotion from a bottle on the table next to the massage table. She began to rub the lotion all over my back and neck area. She began to massage my entire upper back, shoulder, and neck area. She then massaged my lower back and forehead. While the massage was occurring, I attempted to solicit a sexual act from the Asian female. She stated she would not be able to accommodate my needs and continued to massage my body. The Asian female, who was later identified as Trang Nguyen, and has a D.O.B., continued to massage my upper body and head for approximately five to six minutes. At the end of this time, Nguyen exited the room." By the way, the name for the record is Trang, T-R-A-N-G, last name N-G-U-Y-E-N. "After approximately two to three minutes, another Asian female, later identified as Melanie Kang, K-A-N-G, with an identification number, entered the room. Once Kang entered the room, she too applied lotion to her hands and began to massage my upper and lower back, shoulders, necks, and arms. I again attempted to solicit a sex act from Kang, but was again unsuccessful. Kang continued to massage my upper body for approximately two to three minutes." Let me continue to the next page, reading in relevant part. By the way, let me stop right there for a moment. Do you know, Mr. DiFiore, if Melanie Kang had a massage license as a massage therapist, or any other type of massage license?
I do, and she did not have a massage license.
And did Trang Nguyen have a massage license or massage therapist's license?
No, she did not.
And that was on the date in question, August of 200... Excuse me. August 12th, 2008?
That's correct.
Cutting ahead, at some point in time, other detectives who were present entered Hawaiian Tropic, or Hawaiian Relax Massage. Let me begin on the next page from the one I read from. "We were all wearing conspicuous clothing, yellow police raid jackets or police tactical vests, clearly marked with letters 'Police' on all sides of the vest. We then entered the front door of the Hawaii Spa." It's on the same day, same incident. "As soon as we opened the door, we contacted the counter clerk working behind the counter, and I walked around the corner. Myself and Detective Gentry saw two Asian females take off running down the hallway toward the back door. Detective Gentry and myself pursued these two Asian females, who ran through the business and out the back door, but exited into a parking lot onto Valley View. One of the subjects that was running was identified as Smith, Han, with an ID number. Detective Gentry grabbed Smith and took her into custody. As soon as Detective Gentry was okay with Smith, I continued to pursue the second subject down Valley View. Other detectives of the SIB, Special Investigations Bureau, were assisting us with this investigation. They were in their vehicle and contacted and arrested the second Asian female, who was already running eastbound on Sirius. At this time, I returned to the spa and identified the subject that Detective Gentry had taken into custody as Han Smith. Based on the facts presented to me as we were conducting an official notice investigation, and were visually and verbally identified ourselves as police officer, and the fact that she exited the businesses in an attempt to flee our investigation, I arrested Smith for obstructing a police officer, and she was transported to city jail." Is, again, I ask you, Mr. DiFiore, is that one of the incident reports that you relied on in your recommendation to not renew Mr. Lee's license?
Yes, it is.
Mr. DiFiore, let me turn your attention to tab 11 in the binder. Tab number 11, your honor?
Tab 11 or tab 12?
Tab 11, I'm sorry.
I have some questions about tab 11.
I knew you would. If you'll permit me to lay a little foundation here, we'll...
Who took the pictures?
The, let me ask this way. Mr. DiFiore, are you familiar with the photographs that are contained in tab 11 of the binder that's been given to the counsel in here today?
Yes, I am.
Are those a number of photographs?
Yes, they are.
Were you present at the time these photographs were taken?
No, I was not.
Did you appear on the premises shortly after the photographs were taken?
I believe these were taken...
What I'm trying to get to is, when Mr. DiFiore can authenticate these, I know I have Detective Gentry here. I can bring him up here very briefly and go through that foundation questions if you want me to. Again, we're not bound by rules of evidence here, but I'll go with whatever Mr. Terry wants me to do. Would I bring Detective Gentry up, or...
Counsel wants to make a representation to the panel, that's fine. All right, fine, we'll accept the representation.
The, is it fair to represent, Mr. DiFiore, that it's your belief that these pictures contained behind tab 11 represent the interior and exterior of Hawaii Tanning and Spa as it existed on August 12th, 2008?
Yes, it is.
The, have you been inside this establishment?
Yes, I have.
In your professional capacity?
Yes, I have.
And in your professional capacity, how many times have you been there?
Once.
And when was that?
That was on September 25th, 2007.
Given our earlier statement that we're not going to talk about incidents that occurred on September 2007, do the pictures that were taken on August 12th, 2008, or thereabouts, are they consistent with the way the interior of the business looked in September of 2007?
Yes, they are consistent.
Turning your attention to, we'll start with the first photograph. Does that represent the exterior of Hawaii Tanning and Spa?
Yes, it does.
The next couple of photographs, do they contain pictures of the interior lobby and/or customer counter as you enter the massage establishment?
Yes, they do.
Turning a couple of pictures in, does there appear to be a photograph of a plaque on a wall that says "Relaxation and Spa Tanning Bed" with a number of fees associated with it?
Yes, there is.
Does that represent how many minutes for a hot towel, body scrub, hot pads, and shower?
Yes, it does.
Does that also contain a picture of a familiar individual?
Well, I have a couple of questions along that line.
I think you will.
Mr. DiFiore, is the person who is depicted in that picture, right above the no smoking, is that the person who's purportedly going to give the non-members a hot towel, body scrub, hot pads, and a single shower? Is that the purpose of that?
There is no allegation as to why the picture is there. I don't know.
Okay, I'm very interested as to how the picture got there, why the picture's there, and why I'm surrounded by princes die.
For the record, there are a picture of a number of other celebrities also.
I understand that, but I'm very interested in finding out why that particular picture is of this. And so, this is, we may very well be very interested in that.
Does the interior of Hawaii Relax Tanning and Spa contain a number of individual private rooms?
Yes, they do.
Do those individual private rooms contain tanning beds?
There is only one tanning bed on the premises.
What is in the other rooms that where there isn't a tanning bed?
Typically known as massage beds or massage tables.
Turning your attention to a picture of what appears to be a hallway, does that represent the hallway with doors leading to private rooms inside Hawaii Tanning and Relax?
Yes, it does.
The next picture in that series, in tab number 10, does that appear to be a picture of a tanning bed?
Yes, it does.
And when you arrived at Hawaiian Relax and Tanning in September 2007, was there only one tanning bed there then?
That's correct.
And at the time you arrived, was it in use for tanning by customers?
No, it was not.
What was it used for?
It was used, pretty much as it depicted...
I'm going to object to going outside of the scope of what your honor's already ruled was admissible. November 2007, 4...
You're talking about 2007?
We're talking about what the, how many tanning beds were there when he saw it in 2007, and whether that tanning bed was in operation. If you don't want me to go over that?
No, that's beyond the scope of the ruling.
Are you aware, based on your review of the police reports on the incident, the incident involved on August 12th, 2008, of whether or not there was one or more tanning beds on the premises?
Yes, I am.
How many tanning beds were on the premises on August 12th, 2008?
I believe there was one.
And do you know if it was in operation for use as a tanning bed?
Not at the time, I believe, that they did their investigation.
What do you believe it was used for at the time, or do you have any idea?
I believe it was used for the warming of towels, or the drying of towels for customer use.
Turning your attention to the next series of photographs, do these photographs, following the picture of the tanning bed, appear to depict individual rooms inside the business?
Yes, they do.
Do those rooms contain what appear to be small beds?
Yes, they do.
Do those beds... Is there any tanning equipment in any of those rooms along with those beds?
No, there is not.
Is there any tanning lotion?
No, I don't believe there is.
Are there any of the accoutrements that you would associate with a tanning spa in any of those rooms?
No, there is not.
For the record, have you been in other tanning spas?
Yes, I have.
What do you typically see in a tanning spa where that has received a license from the City of Las Vegas?
Typically, you would see a tanning bed. You might see a chair or a hanger where you can enter the room, remove your clothes, dress accordingly to be within the, in the tanning bed itself. There may be a chair, and that's pretty much it.
After these pictures of the series of beds, did you have occasion to count the number of rooms that had beds with no tanning beds in them?
On this occasion, I was not on the premises of the establishment.
Do you know approximately how many rooms are available for private use within this establishment?
Approximately 10 rooms. Nine of the 10 rooms were approximately used for other purposes other than a tanning bed, salon.
Turning your attention to the next photograph, it's titled page 218 of 391, also behind tab 11. Is that a picture of a shower?
Yes, it is.
Turning your attention to the next picture, can you tell us what that represents?
I believe what it is known in the industry, and I'll say massage industry, is a Vichy massage, and that is a shower massage where it's more pressure from water that is being massaging the individual, rather than an individual being massaged by another person.
Turning your attention to, again, same photograph, same tab, it'll be numbered page 222 of 391. Do you recognize what's depicted in that photograph?
I'm not familiar with this photograph specifically.
Turning your attention to picture number 226 of 391, do you recognize what's depicted in that photograph?
Yes, I do.
And what is that?
It looks to be a warmer, a towel warmer, maybe a, maybe a, sort of a modified microwave.
Turning your attention to picture number 227 of 391, can you tell us what's represented in that photograph?
These appear to be cleaning products, mouthwash, shampoo, and toilet paper.
Are those products that you typically associate with a tanning spa?
No, you do not.
Mr. Gerbick, it's becoming cumulative, I believe.
I'm going to try and move right out, and move out of this into another incident, your honor.
I'm worried about the young lady's telephone call.
I understand.
Me, too.
With the limited materials I have left, I'm trying to make as good a record as I can.
No, I appreciate that. Mr. Terry, I'm going to ask you to stand in if the young lady has to leave the book.
Mr. DiFiore, let me turn your attention to tab number 12 in the binder, under exhibit 12. Do you recognize the document that I'm handing you?
Yes, I do.
Did you yourself see the original of this document?
Yes, I did.
What are we looking at?
We're looking at the inside of a page from the periodical known as the City Life Magazine.
And on that page, is there an ad for Big Hawaii Inn Spa?
Yes, there is.
Is the address of that business and phone number the same as Hawaii Relax and Tanning Spa?
Yes, it is.
And which particular section of City Life does that particular ad appear?
That appears in the massage, massage section of the City Life.
And is that one of the pieces of evidence that you relied on in your determination that there was activity going on that should result in the nonrenewal of Mr. Lee's license?
Yes, it was.
Turning your attention to November 13th, 2008, are you familiar with another incident that occurred at the establishment on that day?
Yes, I am.
And was that another incident involving the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department?
Yes, it is.
Did you rely on that particular incident and the facts contained in those reports as, again, part of the basis for your denial of the renewal of Mr. Lee's license?
Yes, I did.
Good, your honor, we're now behind tab number 14 in the binder. We're on November 13th, 2008. Again, this is a, another undercover activity, if I may represent that, involving two detectives. This is being written by Detective Pates, P-A-T-E-S. Maybe in relevant part, "Detective Gentry drove me to Hawaii Relax Tanning and Spa, where I exited the vehicle at 2053 South Valley View. I entered and was greeted by a white male adult who was behind a counter known to be Brett..."
behind a counter known to be Brett Bertolini with an ID number. I asked if he would open and he said yes. He said it would be $60 for the first 45 minutes. I purch- I produced a $100 bill and asked him if he could change it, and he said that he could, and he gave me $40 back, two $20 bills. He led me into a room, number one, that is right and back to the left. He told me that the girl would be right with me, and as I was just robing, there was a knock at the door, and it was Sean Hammett with an ID number. She asked me if I paid up front, if I paid the guy upfront for my session, and I told him that I did. She told me to give her a second, that she'd be right back, and she told me that she was giving me a second to change. I told her I was ready, and she told me that she was already to give her, uh, give her one second, that she'd be right back. She came back approximately one minute later and asked, "Have you a session, have you had a session with us before?" And I told her no. She told me to lay on my stomach and she would start my massage. She started to massage my entire body from head to toe, feet, cals, buttocks, lower neck, upper back, shoulders, and even, uh, my head using baby oil. During the whole time, she gave casual conversation, asked where I was from, what I did for a living, and other sorts of questions. She told me to roll over, and Hammett was wearing a red negligee, exposing her right breast, and said, "You, have you been to one of these places bef- you've been to one of these places before, right?" I said, "Oh, yeah, that's what I'm looking for." She came close and said, quote, "We can do a lot of fun things, but we got to talk about a few things." I said, "Sure." She made a hand signal, like in a circle and a finger, and she said, quote, "Can we start out doing this?" unquote, pointing to her index finger, and then putting her finger, her index finger in a round circle, and I was asked, "What are you talking about? I don't know what you're talking about. Are you talking about, like, a handjob or a blowjob?" She said, "Oh, no, this signal is like blowjob." I said, "Oh, okay." She said, "If you want this," and then she did an up and down motion, which is common motion for handjob or manual masturbation, "we can do that, too." She told me that it would be $50, that if I wanted-
A hundred and fifty.
I'm sorry, a hundred and fifty, but if I wanted the other, it would be 100. I said, "That's cool. What if I wanted, uh, a little bit, and after the blowjob, uh, you get on top and start riding me?" She said, "No, that's what this is," and she did a little circle with her index finger, and I said, "Okay." She said, "I'll start it out with a little this," so I confirmed, "so I'm starting out with a little bit of a blowjob, and you're going to get on top, and then we have some sex." She said, "Oh, yeah." I said, "Okay." I just don't understand. She said, "Well, why don't we get the business portion out of the way?" I reached over to my wallet to get my money. We're now, there's a, because we've double copied these pages, it's a little hard to follow, but now you have to go over to the, the next page on the next side. It's page 255 of 391. We should get my money, and I said to her, "So I don't have any protection," and she told me that that was all, that she has all that, and that she would go get it after I paid her. I produced her two $100 bills from my wallet and gave it to Hammett, and she heard the detectives come in and identify themselves as LVMPD. She asked me several times if I was a cop, and I told her no, and she said, "Take this money back, quick, quick, quick." And then she put it in my hand and told me to lay down, and I told her I was going to get dressed. After I started to get dressed, she said, quote, "Take this money and put it in your pocket real quick," and she asked me again if I was a cop, and I told her no, and took the 200 back. Assisting detectives came in and took her into custody for soliciting for the purposes of prostitution, uh, because she did willfully and unlawfully agree to commit a sex act, oral sex, and intercourse for a fee of $200. She also agreed to, offered me manual masturbation for a fee of $150. She was booked accordingly. $10. We also turn your attention to the police report on, uh, page 254 of 391. We're also dealing with the same date, just another portion of this particular incident. We're talking now about detectives of Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department in an undercover, uh, capacity, uh, investigating vice-related crime at the location of the, uh, business. We had received an information complaint number, and then there's a number, who had re- who had received several letters from an anonymous informant from out of state who told us that this was being used for a house of prostitution. We had an individual posed as a customer, go inside to receive a massage, and get or solicit for prostitution. I was also there posing as a cab driver. This is a Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Officer posing as a cab driver. Has, uh, has subject that, had subject that was later identified as Bertolini Brett, who approached me in the parking lot and asked, quote, "Did you drop the customer off?" unquote. I stated, "Yes, he is my customer, and I'm waiting for him to come back out." He said, "Okay, thank you," and handed me $40. The subject then walked back inside and continued to stay inside. About every 10 minutes, he would walk out, look out the front parking lot, walk out the back door, and look out the back parking lot, at which time when the detectives inside gave a predetermined bus signal, when all of us entered to make an arrest of the subjects inside, I interviewed Bertolini, and he admitted to me that he was paid $500 in cash a week under the table to provide security for the business and the girls. He stated to me that he knows the girls provide massage. When I asked him, "Do they provide any other services like handjobs or blowjob?" He stated, quote, "Well, this is Las Vegas, but I haven't seen any personally." He also told, he was also told to pay each cab driver $40 every time they brought the customer to the location. That was verified by when he paid, when he paid me outside in the parking lot, assuming I was a cab driver for the customer. Bertolini was placed under arrest for aiding and abetting a prostitute and transported to jail.
Mr. DiFiore, is it legal for, uh, businesses in this town to pay money to cab drivers to bring customers?
The, uh, subject of paying cab drivers, um, the, uh, violation there is at the licensee's expense, and under the privileged license code, it is unlawful to, uh, pay gratuit- a gratuity to a cab driver from a privileged license business.
In addition to the, uh, illegal massage activity as described in the police report on November 13th, 2008, did you rely in part on the, uh, tip from Mr. Bertolini to the undercover officer as part of your reason for denying Mr. Lee's renewal of his license?
Yes, I did.
Anything further?
Uh, just a moment, your honor. Turning your attention to tab number 18, uh, and this will be the last. I can appreciate where you're coming from. The, uh, tab number 18, is there appear to be an ad similar to the one that we talked about that, uh, you saw on August 18th, 2008?
Yes, there is.
Was that, uh, something that you saw in January 29th, 2009?
Yes, yes, it is.
Was it also an ad in City Life magazine?
Yes, it was.
Also allowed an ad for Big Hawaii and Spa with the same phone number and address as Hawaii Relax Tanning and Spa?
That's correct.
And what section of City Life did that ad appear in?
It appeared in the massage, uh, section.
Based upon your testimony today, your review of the events between August 12th, 2008, including the police reports, the, uh, ads that you viewed in City Life, and, uh, your, uh, knowledge of the interior of this premises, do you have an opinion as to whether or not Hawaii Relax Tanning and Spa is conducting just tanning and spa activity?
My opinion is that it's, it's, uh, conducting business outside the scope of their license. Uh, some unlawful activity, some illegal activity, uh, and this was, this was the basis for my non-renewing their business license.
And if you had to limit your decision-making to the, just those facts which occurred between August 2008 and the present time, would you have made the same decision to non-renew?
Yes, I would have.
Your honor, are there any further questions?
I thank you for cross-examination.
Please. It's been represented, sir, that in, uh, November of 2007, the city withdrew their objection to the license, and you've heard the-
Wait, you're getting, you're getting into a very dangerous area here, because I, I ruled in your favor, Mr. Terry, as far as the acts that could be considered.
From November of '07.
I understand, but what we're talking about is events after that date.
And we're going to get into all those events.
I know, but if you go up the door, I'm going to, we'll be here another five hours listening to everything that took place in 2007.
From November of 2007, the first thing that you write in your report, which is part of the record, is August 12th, 2008, correct?
Correct.
All right. So from November of 2007 to August 12th, 2008, as a result of certain information, the vice, uh, unit does a undercover operation, correct?
Correct.
And they try to get two girls to soli- to solicit them, correct?
Correct.
And they don't, correct?
Correct.
All right. And so no one is arrested for soliciting prostitution, correct?
Correct.
Any of the, uh, young ladies arrested for, uh, massage?
I believe so.
Any of them get convicted?
Um, I'm not aware of the, uh, disposition of those cases at this time.
You're not able to represent to the council members as to whether or not any one of those ladies got convicted, correct?
Correct.
Now, you also represented, in fact, Mr. Jervik read the report, uh, one woman was arrested for obstruction, correct?
Correct.
When she ran.
That's correct.
She was, in fact, acquitted of that charge, correct?
Um, that I'm not aware of.
All right. You're not offering any evidence to the contrary, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Now, in reference to August 12th, 2008, are you able to tell any of the commissioners that any one person was convicted of anything as a result of the August 12th, 2008 activities? Yes or no?
No.
All right. Mr. Lee was not present on August 12th, 2008, correct?
I don't know if he was or not.
Okay, because you weren't there.
Correct.
Okay. Certainly, Mr. Jappic, Jervik has just read those reports. You didn't hear Mr. Lee's name mentioned as one of the individuals present, correct?
That's, that's correct.
All right, so it is a logical assumption, he was not present.
We could presume that.
All right. Now, in reference to the ads that you made reference to, in the photographs that Mr. Jervik showed you, Hawaiian Tanning is advertising as Hawaiian Tanning, not as a massage parlor, correct?
Um, no.
Okay. Show me the Hawaiian Tanning ad, and show me where it says in that ad, it's a tanning, it's a massage parlor.
It, it does not. It does not.
All right. What, what you're taking objection to is that it appears in an area where there are massage parlor ads, correct?
That's correct.
But it does not indicate it's a massage parlor, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Now, in reference to November 13th, Mr. Bertolini was arrested, correct?
That's correct.
And the city denied the charges as to him, correct?
That's correct.
All right. So no prosecution as a result of that, correct? And nothing further?
All right, thank you. Any, uh, redirect?
Just quickly, uh, the question was asked, have any of them been convicted? Have any of them been acquitted either?
Um, I'm not aware of the dispositions of the current cases that are pending.
Has anybody even gone to file yet?
I don't believe so.
Okay, that's it.
May I, may I?
Certainly.
There, there are certain persons that have been charged with crimes as a result of this investigation, isn't that right?
That is correct.
And they probably have dates pending.
Correct.
So it's not like the city attorney denied prosecution. In fact, they accepted prosecution, and we have pending court dates.
Mr. Wilson, I, with great respect, I don't think you can make that assumption. In fact, I'll represent you, a number of these cases were denied, so. Were any approved?
Perhaps, again, Mr. Terry, we can just stipulate to what's been approved, to what's been continued, and what's been denied.
I'm not sure it's relevant, so, uh, let's go on.
I appreciate that, your honor. I don't have any more questions, Mr. DiFiore.
All right.
Nothing further, sir. Thank you.
Okay, next witness.
Thank you, Detective Gentry. This is where we would like the camera before the detective comes up to, uh, focus just on the council, please.
Fine, uh, are you able to do that, Mr. Riglin?
Are we in a position now?
Hold on.
Hold on.
Are we okay, Mr. Riglin? Do you understand what we're trying to accomplish?
Yes, I'm going to show you.
Right, we will not show this witness, uh, we will not show the witness.
Just don't turn around. Thank you. Uh, could you please state your name and spell your last name for the record?
Uh, yes, my name is, uh, Detective Jeff Gentry, last name is G-E-N-T-R-Y.
And by whom are you employed?
Uh, Las Vegas Metro Police Department.
How long have you been employed by Metro?
Uh, 10 years.
And what division, uh, do you work for at the, at the police department?
Sir, I work for the vice section.
How long have you been a vice officer?
Approximately three years.
Do you do undercover activity as a vice officer?
Yes, sir, I do.
Do you sometimes have occasion to pose as someone who you're not, like a potential customer for a prostitute or a cab driver or something?
Yes, sir, I do.
I'll turn your attention to the 13th of November, 2008.
Is this going to be, uh, additional to what, Mr. DiFiore, you testified to, or corroborative of it, or what?
A little bit corroborative, and just going to ask his opinion. I'm going to discuss three questions, and I'll be out.
Okay, let's hear the three questions, then, real fast.
Did you, uh, did you participate in undercover activity at the Hawaii Relax and Tanning Spa on November 13th, 2008?
Yes, sir, I did.
Were you in undercover capacity?
Yes, sir.
Did, uh, were there arrests made on, as a result of your undercover work on that date for prostitution activity?
Yes, sir, there was.
Do you have an opinion, have you investigated Hawaiian Spa and Tropic, uh, in the past?
Yes, sir, we have.
Have you had complaints in the past?
Yes, sir, several.
Based upon your investigation of this business, do you have an opinion as to whether or not it's a legitimate tanning spa?
Uh, no, sir, it's not a legitimate tanning spa.
What is your opinion of the type of business conducted inside Hawaiian Tropic and Tanning?
No, sir, I-
Hawaiian Relax and Tanning, I'm sorry.
I personally have received massages in this place and have been solicited for acts of, uh, prostitution.
No further questions, your honor.
Mr. Terry?
Name one person since August of '08 that's been convicted of an act of prostitution. There.
Sir, I don't have, I don't have, uh, access to that information.
All right. Name one person that's been convicted since August of '08 of any acts in reference to massages.
Sir, I don't have access to that information either.
All right. Um, Mr. Lee was not present on the November 13th date, correct?
Correct.
You pick and choose the times that you go there, correct?
Yes, sir.
Nothing further.
All right. Any, uh, redirect?
I'll redirect.
All right, your excuse, sir.
Thank you.
Next, please.
I don't refer the witnesses, your honor.
Very good. Um, Mr. Terry?
We would rest likewise.
Do I get to ask, how my picture got in the, in this, uh?
You're with other celebrities, Mr. Mayor.
It's unbelievable how a guy could be, uh, um, put in a very embarrassing spot and be completely innocent. You would agree with that, would you not, Mr. Terry?
Absolutely.
And, Mr. Jervik, you would agree with that, would you not?
I would completely agree with that. If this were a tanning booth, this would be nothing to be embarrassed about.
All right.
Well, it is a tanning booth, and there's nothing to be embarrassed about.
Okay, well, I just want to know how my picture got in there, but, uh, it will be for another day then. Okay, yeah, let's hear from you. Let's hear some argument?
Be very, very brief, your honor. The, uh, because of the limitations put on us by the council, we have been able to introduce only those incidents that Mr. DiFiore says, in spite of the incidents that you're not considering, in spite of the evidence we're not, um, proffering testimony to support, the incidents from August until now alone would have been the basis for his denial of Mr. Lee's license. Uh, you've heard from a Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department detective that this business is not a tanning spa, that this business is consistent with other illegal activity. You've heard the activity can be anything from illegal because they don't have a massage license and they're performing illegal massages, to illegal because they're performing acts of prostitution. Now, Mr. Terry, I'm sure we'll argue that there's not a conviction to go with it, but I'm here to represent to you, you don't need a conviction to make a decision. You are a tribunal. Your hearing may come before the court, the court may become before you. And even if there were a court hearing before you, and even if the court acquitted, as you know, your honor, as a former criminal defense lawyer, and, and Council Wilson knows as well, the standard of proof, and before a criminal ju- in a criminal court, is beyond reasonable doubt the highest standard available. I've asked Mr. Redline to do some research to let you know what the standard of proof is for this hearing today. And so before going further with my argument, I would like Mr. Redline to put on the record what the standard of proof is for this council to uphold Mr. DiFiore's decision.
Mr. Redline, can you make a very brief, please?
I can, your honor. The, there are three rules that apply to all of these appeals. Number one, we're appealing the administrative action of our administrative officer, Mr. DiFiore. The action below is assumed to be correct. Rule number two, this council doesn't substitute its judgment for his. Number three, it is the appellant's, Mr. Lee's burden, to prove that the action below was unsupportable or incorrect. The standard of review is this, or I should say, now, the standard of view, review is the best way to put it. Your standard of review, was there substantial evidence to support the administrative decision below? You have to be cautious when you use that. That is the lowest standard of proof that That is the lowest standard of proof that exists in the law. The word substantial doesn't mean, the way we usually use it, massive or big. It means, is there something that has substance to it, other than caprice, other than whim? And the Nevada Supreme Court, I found twenty-two Nevada Supreme Court decisions which give precisely the same definition in this state. Substantial evidence is defined as that which a reasonable mind might accept as adequate to support a conclusion.
Very good. Mr. Jervik?
May I, Your Honor? We have also, before we continue this as a matter of record, I want to follow the photographs behind tab number eleven. These are just the evidence that we agree would be able to be discussed and debated today with the clerk, so they are also part of the record.
May I put in?
Speaking of those pictures, just for my own verification, I guess, I look at somebody's picture, and all I see is a little child's bedroom. I see stereos, beds, and I've never been in a tanning spa in my life, okay? Never been in one of these places, a massage parlor, in my life. So my question is, this is a tanning spa, where is the tanning lights at?
If I could, that's part of the argument I was about to launch into, is the photographs. What you have are two incidents here that we've been able to discuss. One, where illegal massage was going on by people in an establishment that doesn't have a massage license, by people who don't have a massage therapist's license. The next incident you have is in November, where you actually have an individual discussing an act of prostitution in great detail with an undercover detective, and an individual who apparently runs the front desk and keeps a pretty close eye on the parking lot, tipping a cab driver illegally. I could submit to you that, combined with these photographs, is absolutely inconsistent with any credible claim that this is a legitimate tanning spa. If this were a legitimate tanning spa, why do we have people acting almost as bodyguards and running out in the parking lots? Why do we have women dressed in lingerie running around burying their breasts? Why do we have women inside offering sex acts for money? Why do we have women inside doing illegal massages? Why do we have one, two, three, four, five, you can count the photographs, of one bed after another, that are no tanning lights? You heard Mr. DiFiore talk about the only piece of equipment that he saw inside this establishment is one tanning bed, and you can look at the photograph for yourself, it's number two oh one of three ninety-one, and it's open with towels draped over the top. He believed that it was used for drying or heating towels. If this is a tanning salon, where are the tanning beds? Why do we have nine cots that are not in any way associated with tanning, according to Mr. DiFiore, and only one tanning bed? I submit there's only one logical conclusion, and that this is not a tanning spa. Illegal activity is going on in the form of massages without a license, and in the form of prostitution, in the form of illegal activity of cab drivers. I submit there is more than enough evidence to back the decision of your business licensing director to not renew Mr. Lee's license, and it shouldn't be renewed.
Thank you, Mr. Terry.
Substantial evidence is the test, and this is a gentleman that's had a license since November of oh seven, that Mr. DiFiore could have objected to or instituted some type of proceedings at, at any point in time. So what you have is November of oh seven, nothing is occurring that's even being reported, according to Mr. DiFiore, until August of oh eight. They go in in August of oh eight, and it's the undercover police officers who attempt to get the ladies to solicit, which they do not do. Now, there has been no representations made to you, no evidence, that any one of these people has even been charged. The mere fact that they were arrested and/or cited doesn't mean that the city attorney charged it. That's an affirmative burden upon the city. As far as the ads are concerned, the ad does not say Hawaiian tanning gives massages. What Mr. DiFiore objects to is the fact that it is in an area where there are massage parlors that are advertised for, but there is not a word under Hawaiian tanning that indicates that they do massages. Now, as far as the beds are concerned, did you hear Mr. DiFiore define or attempt to define what a tanning bed was, and why you can't use some other type of a bed for that? Did you hear him indicate that it would not be, or would be, common for an individual that is doing this type of work, which is the rubbing of a body, to carry their own tanning solution? You didn't hear any testimony in that regard. If you look at the actions from August of two thousand and eight, including the ad situation, Mr. Lee should still be allowed to have his license. He was not present on the only two dates that you've had before you. Mr. DiFiore did not bring it, you didn't hear Mr. DiFiore testify, that he brought it to Mr. Lee's attention at any point in time after August of two thousand and eight. And we would submit it to you on that.
All right, thank you.
I'd just say one thing in response to that, is if the argument is this place doesn't say massage on the outside, and therefore they're not doing massage, you can go down Fremont Street and look at hookers, and they don't have a sign around their neck that says a hooker either. That doesn't mean they're not performing illegal activity.
May I put in?
Mr. Terry, you referenced that on two different occasions, that when the supposedly massage was taking place, Mr. Lee wasn't present at that time.
August and November, sir.
Yes. But he still is the owner of this, and he is responsible for what goes on, even whether he's there or whether he's not there, though.
Absolutely, and that's why I brought it to your attention, that had Mr. DiFiore, after August, had Mr. DiFiore testified that after August of two thousand and eight, he brought it to Mr. Lee's attention, and in effect, put him on notice, then the argument would have been different. Mr. Lee was not present in August, he was not present in November.
Your Honor, I...
No, no, I've heard enough.
Okay.
Heard enough. Everybody had a chance to make the record, and I've heard enough. Unless, I'm not going to limit the council from asking questions, but no more arguing.
Just one question, please. I'm going to page five of the book, and I don't think I'm going to be violating your ruling, Your Honor. Are you there, Mr. Jervik?
I'm here.
One, two, third paragraph from the bottom relates to the November twenty-first, two thousand and seven, the appeal, et cetera. I think I remember what happened at that time, but the reason that the agenda item was strict, and the non-renewal was withdrawn, this is more of a question, was more of a technicality.
I believe it's procedural, as I argued earlier. I think what happened is staff...
And again, I'm going to object. There was no record made as of that point in time.
All right.
As to what the reasons were.
I'm going to allow the question to be answered.
Very well.
This is not due to our consideration, it's just a question, which is basically outside the proceeding at this point.
And believe me, I have enormous respect, Mr. Terry. If my recollection is wrong in any way, shape, or form, I trust he will correct me. I did not talk with Mr. Terry directly about withdrawing it. I talked with Mr. Henry in my office, and I talked to him recently. But my recollection was, is that staff had attempted to non-renew the license after renewing it, in essence. They'd accepted the check, and it had already passed through that time barrier. And when Mr. Terry was retained, and we learned that fact, we advised that based on these facts, we shouldn't go forward, and it was withdrawn. It was my recollection, the merits of this were never reached or discussed at the council level, and no waiver was intentionally given by the city of a right to bring it up later. But what I was going to say, Your Honor, is when Mr. Terry is making an implication here, that Mr. Lee wasn't on notice, because Mr. Lee didn't tell him...
No, I understand.
We're getting very, very close to an implication that he's never been notified about problems.
No, no, I understand that, but once again, I'm not, I don't believe that's relevant. It may go to the weight, but it's irrelevant as far as the responsibility. The code makes him responsible as the licensee for conduct that takes place on his premises. We're not talking about prostitution. That's not what the allegation is. The allegation is having a massage license, and, not having a massage license, having a sun tanning license, and if other activities go on, that's, it may be probative of something, but the only issue that I think is relevant here is whether or not massages were taking place with that, an appropriate license.
Let me state, Your Honor, that it's really two things, and if you look at the very first section, before we get to the tabs, we're at page twelve of three ninety-one, this is the Las Vegas Municipal Code, I think that the reasons we're down to is number six point oh two oh nine oh, two A, that's not having a massage license.
Right.
It's also two H, and that's the business activity constitutes, promotes, causes, allows, fosters, aids, or otherwise enables a private nuisance, public nuisance, chronic nuisance, or is being conducted in an unlawful, illegal, or imprudible manner. That is the prostitution.
I appreciate that. All right, thank you. Counselwoman, your motion, please.
I agree that the incidents from August two thousand and eight to the present support there is substantial evidence to support the establishment is not a tanning salon, and I move for non-renewal of the business license. And, Mr. Jervik, I ask if this is the correct language I should use to support our license manager's recommendation.
I think that's good, I think that quite technically, it would just be moved to uphold Mr. DiFiore's decision to non-renew.
And basically, we're voting on the renewal or non-renewal of the tanning license.
Right. This would be just a tanning license, the only license the establishment has, so it would be to uphold Mr. DiFiore's decision to non-renew.
And as I said, I think there's substantial evidence to support that this is not a tanning salon.
All right.
Thank you.
That's the most... Let's vote, please. Okay. All those in favor of the councilwoman's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, the council.
All right, now, we could take a recess. We're going to take a recess until a quarter after two, and we have a very fast resolution of the rest of the morning calendar. And then what we're going to do is, we're going to, I understand, we're having a closed-door session after the afternoon calendar, so we don't hold, I am, so we don't hold people up who are here for the afternoon agenda. We'll be back here at a quarter after two.
What a waste of time. That took me an hour and a half. I don't know why I had to read everything into it. I could have referred it.
As far as I know, we see councilmen from the board, and they just...
That might be the record. Margo, we sit her away to call the district's, she's the planning directors, Washington DC, gathering, and...
And if anybody asks me how I'm...
All right, good afternoon, once again, ladies and gentlemen. All right. Okay. All right, item sixty-three, R sixteen, two thousand and nine, discussion possible action regarding a resolution consenting to the undertakings of the City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency in connection with the Commercial Visual Improvement Program Agreement between the RDA and Fremont Street Experience Parking Corporation, the owner, and Hennessy's Las Vegas Inc., doing business as Las Vegas Country Saloon, the tenant and CVIP participant located at four twenty-five Fremont Street, to be in compliance with and in furtherance of the goals and objectives of the RDA. This is in Ward three, and the item is related, of course, to the Redevelopment Agency, item number four, which was heard earlier this morning. Mr. Adams?
Scott Adams, Director of the Austin Business Development. Actually, items sixty-three and four are virtually identical on that.
Okay, now, read sixty-four into the record, too. R seventeen, two thousand and nine, discussion possible action regarding a resolution consenting to the undertakings of the City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency in connection with the Commercial Visual Improvement Program between the RDA and PRMD LLC, located at eight twenty-three South Las Vegas Boulevard, to be in compliance with and in furtherance of the goals and objectives of the RDA in Ward three, and the item is related to RDA item five from this morning's agenda.
These are the two, these are the standard consent resolutions that you approve, that are companion to the two VIP items that you approved acting as the RDA this morning. By your approval of these two consent resolutions, you'll make the actions of the RDA effective, and staff recommends approval.
Any comments or questions? May I put in?
Yes, Your Honor, on item number sixty-three, I'm going to follow Redevelopment Agency's recommendation, as well as our vote this morning, and vote for approval of item number sixty-three.
Okay, let's vote, and this is going to be amazing. I could not find my little, what do you do? I got the little fellow, wait a second. Wait a second, wait a second. Strong. All right. How do you like that? Okay. Post, please. Motion carries. Great. Let's have another motion. Oh, and the record should reflect, the councilwoman, Tarkanian, is excused.
On item sixty-four, the same motion, please, for approval.
All right, let's vote.
Remember, you're going to vote no.
Post, please. Motion carries. All right, this is fun.
You're going to vote no on that one.
Huh?
You're going to vote no on that one.
Item sixty-five, this is a discussion on possible action on appointments of council members to various city of Las Vegas and other jurisdictional boards. At this time, I would move to appoint Councilman Steiman as a representative to the Chief Local Elected Officials Consortium. I'd like to appoint Councilwoman Tarkanian as the alternate to the Clean Water Coalition. I'd like to appoint Councilman Steiman as the alternate to the Southern Nevada Water Authority, and I would appoint Councilwoman Tarkanian to the Yucca Mountain Nuclear Repository Commission. That's my motion, please. Please vote. Post, please. Motion carries. Okay, item sixty-six is the Park of Recreation Advisory Commission, Charles Foger and Lori Bookman. Terms expire March twenty-four, two thousand and nine. Our options are to reappoint Mr. Foger and Ms. Bookman, or appoint two new members to fill these posts. Is there a motion by anybody on this?
I would move to follow, or to reappoint, Mr. Foger and Ms. Walkman.
All right, that's the motion. Please vote. Post? Motion carries. Item sixty-seven is the Sistern Preservation Commission, Dorothy Wright. Her term expires March twenty-four, two thousand and nine, and Mary Haush. Her term expires March sixth, two thousand and nine. The option is to reappoint either of the ladies, or both of the ladies, or to appoint new members. Does anybody have a motion, please?
Again, Your Honor, Ms. Wright and Ms. Haush has done a tremendous job serving us on this board. I would move to reappoint both of them.
Very good. That's the motion. Let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Bill number two thousand and nine dash four grants to Level Three Communications LLC a non-exclusive franchise for the purpose of installing, operating, and maintaining a telecommunications service within the city, subject to and in accordance with the terms and conditions of the franchise agreement incorporated by reference into this ordinance. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have a read?
Yes, Mayor, please.
Thank you.
Counselman, thank you, Your Honor. Bill number twenty-nine dash four, ordinance granting Level Three Communications LLC a limited liability company, Level Three organizing and existing under the laws of the State of Delaware and authorized to do business in Nevada, non-exclusive franchise for telecommunications service within the corporate limits of the City of Las Vegas, subject to and accordance with that certain franchise agreement entered into between the City of Las Vegas and Level Three, and providing for the matters properly written there, too.
Thank you. Councilman Barlow, do you have a motion, please?
Yes, my motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval of this item, subject to all conditions.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Post?
Bill number twenty-nine dash five, an ordinance to revise and consolidate the review and approval procedures for signs within the Downtown Casino Overlay District, the Downtown Entertainment Overlay District, the Las Vegas Boulevard Scenic Byway Overlay District, and private related matters.
Thank you, ladies and councilmen. Your motion, please.
Yes, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation of approval subject to all conditions.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Items seventy-one and seventy-two, which are Bills two thousand nine dash six and two thousand nine dash seven, are eligible for adoption at a later meeting, so we're going to move on to the new bills. New bills, items seventy-three through seventy-five, Bills two thousand nine dash nine through two thousand nine dash eleven, will be heard at the recommending committee meeting on Tuesday, March seventeenth, two thousand nine. Mr. Jervis, could you read those, please?
I'll be happy to, Your Honor. Bill number twenty-nine dash nine, an ordinance to authorize the administrative issuance of temporary business licenses for privileged businesses and private related matters. Bill twenty-nine dash ten, an ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city, particular described land to be annexed to make it so that the laws obligations and benefits of the city, private related matters. And finally, Bill number twenty-nine eleven, an ordinance creating a city of Las Vegas special improvement district number fifteen thirteen via Oliver Avenue and Valdez Street, east of Cimarron Road, describing details in connection therewith and other matters relating thereto.
Thank you. And will you be available, Councilman Barlow?
What is the date of the next recommending?
That's Tuesday, March seventeenth.
Tuesday, March seventeenth.
That's two, two weeks from yesterday.
Yes, I'm available. Thank you.
All right. And Councilman Steiman, are you available?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Very good. I'd like to assign these bills to you, and we'll now go to item number seventy-six. Seventy-six is a...
That's the closed session.
Right. I understand.
You're going to do that now?
No.
You go to seventy-seven.
Item seventy-seven. Item seventy-seven, any items from the afternoon session that the council staff and/or the applicant wished to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protan?
I will.
Item seventy-seven.
So moved, Your Honor.
All right. Are there any items that anyone wishes to bring forward?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We have item number ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, GPA thirty-two, one sixty-seven, rezoning thirty-two, one sixty-eight, special use permit thirty-two, five forty-eight, site development review thirty-two, five forty-nine, applicant's auto sales owner, Beard Family Trust, on zero point five five acres at thirty-nine twenty West Arrow Avenue. The applicant would like that to be held in advance until our March eighteenth, two thousand nine meeting. I'm sorry.
No problem. Are there any other items? All right.
I make a motion to read these items before taking for action, please.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Now, we will turn to item number ninety-four. Ninety-four is SUP three-one-three-six-seven, special use permit, it's a public hearing. The applicant is Nozubia. The owner is Mario Pena Pena. Appeal filed from the denial by the Planning Commission of a request for special use permit for auto repair garage minor with service paid doors facing the right of way at fifteen fifty North Rancho Drive. This is in Ward Five. The Planning Commission and staff both recommend denial. It's a public hearing, which is now declared open.
Good afternoon. Dave Clapp Saddle with G.C. Garcia, seventeen-eleven Whitney Mesa Drive in Henderson, here on behalf of Mr. Pena, who unfortunately got called away and could not be here this afternoon. For the parcel on your screen, after the Planning Commission denial, we have been working with the applicant to take a look at ways to make investments and improvements to bring the property up to standard. And we have been working with your planning staff, Councilman Barlow's staff, and Public Works to make that happen. And if I can just briefly go to the overhead. In your backup, here's the way the property looks today. There is no business on the property. It's not being utilized. The color, landscaping, signage, look, and feel of the property are not up to par with what we would expect in a business for Ward Five. Here's the way it looks today with the yellow and red color, unattractive wall, unattractive appearance, and in working with your staff, here's the way it is going to look in the future. We've been working with your staff on a site plan to repaint the building, repaint the canopy, redo the signage, redo the pavement, redo the site plan to make sure we are, we are in compliance with the parking standards, that there is landscaping placed at the corner and all around the property to significantly upgrade the property, and also make improvements to the building so it's a viable business, that's attractive, upgrades the area. We're working with the, with your staff on a site plan to make that come true. We've been working with your staff on the need for a six-month review as a public hearing once a business license is issued for the tire sales and tire installation business. Six months after that business license, we'll come back, we'll do a public hearing, we'll do a neighborhood meeting to make sure that all the improvements are in place according to the satisfaction of staff and the councilman's office as well. We're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions of Mr. Clapp Saddle? All right. Councilman Barlow, your pleasure, please. By the way, pardon me. It's a public hearing if anyone wants to be heard. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing then.
Yes, Mayor. First and foremost, I would like to thank Mr. Clapp Saddle and his client for working with my staff on this item, specifically coming from a denial from Planning Commission. I believe that we've worked out some details as to what we're going to do in order to make this a, a site that the entire community can be, can be proud of. With that being said, I do have some questions to, to go over with you. Number one is the hours of operation. I would like to see the hours of operation from eight AM until eight PM for all, for all business, meaning that the hot dog truck that sets up at eight o'clock and shuts down approximately three AM has to go away. Feel free to have the hot dog stand during the regular primary operating hours of eight AM to eight PM. Have no issue with it. The trash enclosures, if I may have planning to jump in, to make sure that we have the, that in the conditions of the, the trash enclosures being the canisters inside of the enclosure, because right now they're on the outside.
Correct. The current location is on the outside. The requirement is to have a new site plan review submitted. The applicant has submitted that, and we are working with them to address the trash enclosures, the parking, and the landscaping, to bring those up to code as Mr. Clapp Saddle has presented. So we will definitely ask for that requirement, that they're in an enclosure with a trellis on top.
Okay. And Mr. Clapp Saddle, if you will, speak to me in regards to landscaping. Where are we at with the landscaping, and when will that landscaping come into play?
If we can go to the overhead, here is the corner of Rancho in Vegas where today the only thing that's there are those unattractive signs. What we're going to do on that corner, we can't put twenty-four inch box trees there because it would interfere with the signage, but we can do decomposed granite with a series of flats, flowers, shrubs, very attractive looking plants that we will work with your office and your staff on. We will also be adding two twenty-four inch box trees along Rancho, and then back on the triangular piece of the property. Today, there are three palm trees there. We're going to add additional twenty-four inch box trees with Texas Privates and lots of twenty gallon, five gallon, and one gallon shrubs to really improve the look of that piece of the property.
Okay. And what about the striping of the parking lot? Restriping of the parking lot and resurface?
Yep. Just yesterday, we met with your planning staff and your Public Works staff. The layout that we have for the parking doesn't quite work today, but by the time we get the, the site plan approved, there will be a parking layout for fourteen spaces that meet all the standards of the code regarding on-site circulation.
And signage. I would like to make sure that the signage is in proper order of the city's codes and no additional signage as far as outside of, you know, the grand opening of banners and things of that nature. I don't want to see a conglomerate of small signs all over the property. And also, I must speak to outside storage. It is not allowed within the code. However, I know a lot of the tire shops around town that I've seen continue to try to get away with the outside stores. I don't want to see absolutely no outside storage as it pertains to this, this tire shop.
No outside storage. All the tires will be moved inside at the close of business. Regarding signage on the rendering, the only two signs we're going to have are the two signs there that are currently there, but they're going to be repainted, upgraded, and a color scheme that fits the rest of the property. So it's attractive looking signage, not a lot of banners, only what's there today.
Correct. Okay. And I appreciate that. And planning, do you, you have something you need to read into the record before I make my motion?
I do. We have some condition changes. In regards to the banners, just to let you know, condition number three addresses temporary signs and what would be permitted in there to ensure compliance.
Thank you.
Additional conditions staff is recommending is, condition number one, this special use permit, SUP three-one-three-six-seven, shall be reviewed in six months to ascertain compliance with these conditions or an opposed additional conditions to ameliorate any undesirable aspects of the use. The applicant shall be responsible for notification cost of the review. Condition number two, the hours of operation for all business activity on-site shall be limited to eight AM to eight PM. And condition number three added, conformance to site plan review, SDR three-three-five-three-four shall be required.
And do you agree with those conditions?
We concur. Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Great. So with that being said, I would like to move to approve this item, subject to all conditions, and also thank you for working with myself and, and the city staff in order to bring a much-needed business to this corner in Ward Five. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I want to thank your staff as well, and that of Public Works and, and the Planning Department.
Okay. See you in six months.
All right. That's a motion. Let's vote, please.
Mr. Mayor, in attempt to retain my position as the great abstainer.
Oh, man.
I will abstain on this because I heard it at Planning Commission.
Oh, I thought we could have through one meeting.
We, we can't do it.
All right. Let's vote. At least the new machine will have the new, the first abstain on it. Post, please. Motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon. Thank you.
Okay. We have ninety-five, RQR three-two-seven-one-oh, public hearing. The applicant owner is Terrible Herbst, Inc. Required review of an approved special use permit for a liquor store in conjunction with a convenience store with fuel pumps on point nine-one acres at ten fifty-one Desert Foothill Drive. This is in Ward Two. The staff recommends approval, subject to conditions. It's a public hearing, which is now declared open. Yes, ma'am.
Katie Fellows, three-seven-seven-three, Howard Hughes Parkway, here on behalf of the applicant. The applicant agrees with all of staff's recommendations, and I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that the council may have with respect to this required review.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this time? Folks, a public hearing if anyone would like to be heard. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Wilson.
Thank you. I'd like my colleagues to recognize, and why there's an echo, that Ward Two has thirty-three percent of the remaining planning and development items this afternoon.
You, you did the math.
I did. I needed a calculator. My motion is for approval.
Okay. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ninety-six is SDR three-two-eight-two-six, Site Development Plan Review. The applicant owner is Project Alta LLC and Project Alta Roman numero two LLC. Request for a Site Development Plan Review for a proposed office building consisting of two four-story, one hundred and twenty thousand square foot buildings, one five-story, one hundred and fifty thousand square foot building, and one six-story, sixteen hundred and seventy-nine space parking structure with a waiver of the building placement and orientation standards on fourteen point five-five acres at the northwest corner of Alta Drive and Martin L. King Boulevard. This is in Ward Five, and the Planning Commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. It's a public hearing, which is now declared open. Yes, sir.
Your Honor and councilmembers, Greg Borghell, three hundred South Fourth Street, representing the developer on this project. It has had a good deal of public exposure. It is intended to be the new administrative center for the Metropolitan Police Department. We certainly appreciate the staff's favorable recommendation, the favorable recommendation of your Planning Commission. We've done considerable neighborhood outreach at the request of Councilman Barlow, and I think it's fair to say that we've pretty much universally been welcomed to the neighborhood with the project. We accept the conditions. It's my understanding that staff needs to read some minor amendments to conditions as they came out of Planning Commission. They've shared those with us, and we accept the amendments that we're expecting to hear as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Mr. Borghell, at this time? All right. Public hearing, folks, if anybody would like to be heard on the Metroplex? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And Councilman Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. Another exciting new development to Ward Five, and I greatly appreciate the assistance of the developer and their representatives on this much-needed project, the Metroplex, and I truly believe that this is going to be a great amenity to the community. The residents around, whether it be the Medical District or the Rancho Manor Neighborhood Association or Rancho Circle, they have had an opportunity to speak in length to the developer of this site and in, speaking in favor of this item and what this development will bring to the community. I do have a couple of conditions, an adjustment to condition number twenty-one as well as thirty-three, and I would like for Public Works at this time to read those items into the record before I make my motion.
Thank you, Councilman and Mayor, through you. I would like to amend condition number twenty-one. I'm Bart Anderson with Public Works. Amend...
Can you speak up?
Bart Anderson with Public Works. I'd like to amend condition number twenty-one to read as follows. Owner shall coordinate with the Department of Public Works to develop a memorandum of understanding between developer and the city, for the city to acquire additional right-of-way on Martin L. King Boulevard. Both owner and city will utilize best efforts to execute a memorandum of understanding by March thirty-first, two thousand and nine. Plans and studies prepared for the site and off-site improvements will not reflect potential additional, pardon me, MLK right-of-way, and that should be Martin Luther King right-of-way, until after all terms of any acquisition are mutually agreed by both owner and the city. The building layout on this site shall not prohibit potential widening of Martin Luther King Boulevard in accordance with the proposed roadway alignment shown in the environmental impact study proposed by the Nevada Department of Transportation for the Project Neon Improvement Project. The failure of the parties to execute the memorandum of understanding by March thirty-first, two thousand and nine shall in no way negate the city's approval of this site development. Review, delay project submittals, reviews, approvals, nor shall it affect developer's right to compensation for any property taken by the city. And I would also like to add a new condition, number thirty-three, to read as follows. If the northernmost driveway on Martin L. King Boulevard is signalized, the location of the proposed buildings, as shown on this site plan, may be administratively adjusted southward to accommodate technical details of driveway geometrics to support the proposed signalization of the driveway, as long as such adjustments meet the requirements of Title nineteen point one-eight point zero-five-zero parent H point one. If driveway geometrics acceptable to the city traffic engineer cannot be accomplished for any reason, no signal shall be permitted, and median modifications will be required on Martin L. King Boulevard to prevent left turns out of this driveway. And that concludes my additions.
And are you in position to accept those conditions at this time, on behalf of your client?
Yes, sir. The staff was kind enough to share those with us earlier. We've reviewed them. They're fine.
Okay. So with that being said, I would like to move to approve this item, subject to all conditions. Thank you.
Before we consider that, it's a public, it's a public hearing.
Oh, well, the mayor would like to open up public hearing for those...
That's correct.
...of you who are interested in speaking on this item.
Anybody like to be heard on this very tenuous item?
Two Thousand and Nine shall in no way negate the city's approval of this site development. Review, delay project submittals, reviews, approvals, nor shall it affect developers' right to compensation for any property taken by the city. And I would also like to add a new condition, number thirty-three, to read as follows. If the northernmost driveway on Martin L. King Boulevard is signalized, the location of the proposed buildings as shown on this site plan may be administratively adjusted southward to accommodate technical details of driveway geometrics to support the proposed signalization of the driveway, as long as such adjustments meet the requirements of Title nineteen point one-eight point zero-five-zero parent H point one. If driveway geometrics acceptable to the city traffic engineer cannot be accomplished for any reason, no signal shall be permitted, and median modifications will be required on Martin L. King Boulevard to prevent left turns out of this driveway. And that concludes my additions.
And are you in position to accept those conditions at this time on behalf of your client?
Yes, sir. The staff was kind enough to share those with us earlier. We've reviewed them. They're fine.
Okay. So with that being said, I would like to move to approve this item subject to all conditions. Thank you.
Before we consider that, it's public here.
Well, the mayor would like to open up public hearing for those...
That's correct.
...of you who are interested in speaking on this item.
Anybody like to be heard on this very tenuous item? Mr. Fine, you have anything you want to say?
I heard you were great on CNBC today.
Mr. Fine, do you have anything you want to say?
I heard the same thing.
All right, fair enough. Okay, hearing none, then, Councilman, your motion again, please.
Thank you. I would like to move to approve this item subject to all conditions.
All right, thanks. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Good luck with that project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we want to...
Oh!
Okay.
I have to revote it. I have to disclose I'm a partner with Mr. Fine on a piece of property on West Charleston that could have been a disaster for me, and may my vote reflect an abstention.
Will we vote it so it's on the record?
Yeah, I'd like to put it on the record. Thanks. I'm having such a good time with this little fellow here that I'm ready to vote. Let's vote, please. Post. It works. Motion carries.
Thank you again, and we want to especially thank your staffs for working with us on the condition so we could keep this on schedule. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Item ninety-seven, Madam Clark, would you please set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission to meetings in dangerous buildings or nuisance letter abeyance? Okay. Item ninety-eight, would any member of the council wish to speak on anything under this portion of the agenda?
I have a list, Your Honor.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, let Councilor Russell go first, and then Councilman Barlow will go second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman. I just want to make mention for the folks here, the audience, and the folks at home. The Nevada Department of Transportation, tomorrow, March fifth, will be holding an neighborhood open house meeting from four to seven at the Centennial House Community Center to discuss the I-15 and US-95 Express Lane Demonstration Project here in the city of Las Vegas. This is part of the toll roll project, and please note that none of the existing lanes will be part of this project. We certainly need everybody's input out there within the city limits to discuss this and understand what's going on and get their comments back. Also, Ward Six Information Fair is occurring on March nineteenth. Make sure you get that down on your calendars, six-thirty to eight PM at the Northwest Technical Academy, Tropical Parkway in Durango. And you'll guys, you'll love this one. If you recall, several months ago, there was, during Nevada Reading Week, that was actually last year, the kids at Ernest J. May read ten thousand books. The deal was if they read ten thousand books, I would dye my hair pink, which they read ten thousand books, and I let the kids at the school dye my hair pink. Now, the next competition was this. They had to read thirty-five thousand books, and they wanted the principal and myself to race donkeys at the school. They have read thirty-five thousand books. Mr. Humphries is providing us with a couple of mules, and I will be riding, racing the principal at Ernest J. Elementary School on donkeys at the school, March seventeenth at two-thirty for all of you who'd like to come out there and watch me. So, the deal was also, Your Honor and council members, I had to ride the donkey backwards.
Oh, boy.
So, pardon? In a kilt. Don't push your luck, Mr. Humphries. No pink hair, just riding the donkey backwards.
Very good.
Yes.
Because you said donkey, and then you said mule.
Yeah, well, it was donkey, but we found we have two mules we're going to ride, so it's going to be the mules. Well, it's close enough.
Councilor Barlow, do you have anything you want to talk about, like donkeys, mules?
No, I have some very pertinent information to share with the residents of Ward Five. On March fifth, I'm hosting the tail end of my neighborhood meetings. The next Ward Five neighborhood meeting will take place at Mabel Hogarth, six PM, March fifth. On March ninth, the mayor and I have the pleasure of ribbon-cutting ceremony and grand opening of Don't Tell Mama Fremont East District at five-thirty, and that is on this coming Monday, March ninth. And I have my Doolittle neighborhood meeting taking place on March tenth at six PM, and Sierra Oeste neighborhood meeting taking place at six PM on March eleventh.
Very good, thank you.
And so, please, I invite all of Ward Five citizens, if that's an area in which you live near, to please come out and hear about all the great things that are happening in your neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard at this time? All right, thank you very much. Now, can I take citizens' participation and then go into closed session? All right. Item ninety-nine is citizens' participation. Public commentary in this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come forward, give us your name, and put the three-minute timer on, please. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Dennis Stony, Las Vegas resident. The big question that I have about City Hall, even though it is illegal to bring, to bring it up for vote the way it sits now, the difference is that some people want to build a city hall that we really don't need just to put people to work. My dad worked construction for years. He knew it was a seasonal job and not full-time work all the time. If I lost my job, I would not come to City Hall and ask them to build me. In other words, I wouldn't come down here to ask to build a new city hall if I lost my job. I would go out and look for another job. I'd change my career field or something. In other words, I don't think that because we don't need it, that it should be built. Number two, I don't agree that Councilor Ross is able to vote on any kind of construction projects while he is employed by the construction unions as secretary and treasurer. He has voted on eighty billion in union contracts that has benefited his employer. Do you really think that Mr. Ross would still have his job if he had voted against the contracts? I question giving jobs to a contractor for city who the last quarter, December zero-eight, lost twenty million dollars. I really think that there's contractors out there that are making a profit that would, I mean, why pick somebody that's lost twenty million in the last quarter? I don't ride the bus that says God's answer to all our economic problems is build, build, build. If that was true, three years ago, we were the fastest-growing city in the United States. Today, we were hit the hardest of any city. So I guess that philosophy doesn't always work. Mayor Protem Gary Rees, and I quote, "It's not, it's enough that the council was elected to conduct the people's business." I really feel that the people of Las Vegas are voting on this project," end quote. Well, I guess we're not. But even though you were voted in office, nobody gave anybody a blank check. Nobody gave anybody a blank check.
Hey, the time's up, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard?
Mayor Goodman, just one last neighborhood meeting. On March sixteenth at six PM at the Las Vegas Library will be my final spring, or I should say, yeah, I guess spring, spring neighborhood meeting taking place at the Las Vegas Library. So if, in fact, you live near the Las Vegas Library here on Las Vegas Boulevard, please come out March sixteenth at six PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go into the next matter, do you or Councilor Ross want to say anything in response on the record? All right. Our next item is to go into closed session to discuss upcoming labor negotiations. May I have a motion, please, to go into closed session?
So moved, Your Honor.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Post, please.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Motion carries. Councilman Ross should show yes. And following the closed-door session, the council meeting will be adjourned. So we're going to go into closed session. When we're through our business there, the meeting's adjourned.